This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Geppert, Mr. Tinkler here. Mrs. Walsh is here and Mr. Guy is online.
Okay, so we are at the three o'clock mark. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge of limits. Before we get started, if we could just have a motion to allow Supervisor Guy to attend virtually.
By any exceptional circumstances.
So moved. A motion of second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, we will open up for public comment.
I do not have any requests for public comment. And if there's anyone online that would like to comment, please chat in and I'll recognize you. I'm showing no response.
No responses. Okay. We will, we will start with our staff reports and Tony will start with you.
Yes, briefly, just on the ADT matter, we reached a general release and settlement agreement. It's been filed with the court. That ADT will be paying the district $5,915, which is the amount of money that we owe the lawsuit for, plus the filing fee, plus the summons. And we're supposed to have that within 15 days of this Monday. If we don't get it and the funds don't clear, we just file this document. It's called an affidavit of noncompliance and we automatically get a judgment. I, I think they want to pay this to get us out of their hair. So that, that should happen within the next two weeks. And Laura's been on top of that very much so. Next, with the, in Pelican Reserve on the traffic enforcement agreement, amending it. I had some follow-up emails with the staff person at the city of Fort Myers. And today, yesterday, I received a phone call from gentleman who worked in the police department, an attorney, talk about that. So hopefully we'll have something shortly in the next couple meetings as to what requirements that the city will require. We already talked about it briefly, but I just want to hear from the individual. With regards to the DRI amendment, I made some amendments and changes and sent that, Steve Damsec sent that to Charles Mann back on April 5th. I followed up today with an email reminder to Charles, asking the status. I haven't heard back yet, so I think we just need to keep nudging Charles Mann and Lenar on that.
Just on the emergency route.
Yeah, because I think Steve and I are on board with everything, the language. Steve and I worked together on it. We're fine. Need Charles to sign off on it. Paula McDaniel's did a very good job. From RWH, he's a planner that's been engaged through a process and submit the application, prepare a draft. I provided my comments on the language. Just Stephen's comments, too. Then we won the Lenar's comments on it, but once everybody's lined up, I think it'll be a really fast application process, even though it takes time to get the approval. That's pretty much it. Is there any other questions? Briefly, I worked with the chairman, worked up some language for the league agreements as an addendum to address the parking over in the schools. So Doug, you want me to send it on to the soccer folks or league folks?
Yeah, I think that's, if, if you're okay with it, I would just probably just share it with, has Brian?
Oh yeah, I'll send it to Brian.
Send it to Brian, let him look at it. And then if he is good with it, then we can, we can have it, Brian or you distribute to leagues.
Okay. I mean, Brian, since Brian interacts with them most often, it's probably better coming from Brian.
I think it's pertinent just to probably flag and to Gateway Soccer. I think we can exclude any, any additional. The other, do you want?
Okay. Thank you. I'll follow up on that then.
So there was, Brian had worked with the Gateway Elementary School. The county had instituted the Facilitron, which is a the management, it's a management platform they use for basically their rentals of their, their facilities. And I think originally we were under the impression that all the leagues would be charged. So I had reached out to the principal and she said that she, we'd had a longstanding relationship with, that the elementary school had had a longstanding relationship with Gateway District. They shifted over to this new system, but she didn't anticipate any, any charge for two reasons. One, there's a tiered structure and our our use would fall under a tier that wouldn't be charged. And in addition, she would not support any charging because of the relationship. So with that being said, the one area that she did request is that the, that the district be the one kind of entering into the agreement, agreement in Facilitron. She wanted to make sure that there was just liability coverage, which I told her that all of our leagues, it's required they have insurance and that insurance would extend over. So what Tony is doing because of the request for us to be the kind of governing body, because her stance was, look, we have never been involved. We don't want to be involved. We don't be, we don't want to have to have any, any expectations on, you know, any oversight. We want the district to do that. So Tony drafted an addendum that basically will, will call out in more detail to the leagues that any use within that facility, any liability risk falls under, under their agreement. So it's, it's basically in order for us to assume responsibility or assume management as opposed to the leagues going in and signing up to cover ourselves, we just added additional language.
Yeah. And what it also does, it gives, yeah, the league would have to submit a request to the district. District would then evaluate it. And just a couple of days, I didn't, left the days blank for now to decide whether or not to process a reservation. Then if the, if the parking is reserved for league, then they, they hold the district harmless from any lost cost. So basically your conversation with her.
Right.
Yeah, very fruitful.
Yeah, well, it was. And part of the
It only two or three pages as opposed to forty-five.
Yeah.
Well, you get that when you say aye.
Well, and, and part of the, so two, two reasons why we are going to enter into the agreement through the Facilitron system is, one, that's at the request of the principal. And two, you've got leagues out here at the same time. So instead of, you know, running into any issue on who does what or who has whatever, we'll just, it'll come under our master service.
As it always has.
As it always has.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And the, and the, the school system did issue keys. So the district now has keys to the, to the gates as well as Flag and Soccer have keys given to them and documented in the school's record. So they keep track of.
His keys for parking?
For, for the gate. There's a lock. There's three locks.
The one that's always been there.
The one that, yeah, Mark has been the only one that's had a key to that gate. He's the only one that really had been leveraging it. So now Flag will be able to leverage it. And just as an FYI, the, the leagues have been trying to get volunteers and I've been trying to assist with that. So last weekend, when they opened the, the parking up on Fridays and Saturdays, we had a significant decrease in, in the number of cars parked on the side. And that was for game day, for Friday and for Saturday. There was probably, you know, any, any given time, maybe 25 to 50 cars as opposed to 100 plus. So it's getting better. And Brian and I had a conversation. We're going to monitor it, see if it gets better. The leagues have been communicating every week as a reminder. So it'll be a little bit of a slow burn to get everyone, you know, to, to stop parking on the side of the road. But what we did see was, you know, they're not parking in those, you know, those last parking spots, which is like in between the trees or maybe blocking, you know, the, the facilities on this side. So overall, so win-win. Any additional questions for council? District engineer, Tetra Tech, Steven.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. First up, we've got the Pelican Reserve Aeration System Electrical Review. I have a placeholder that was on the agenda and then I sent out separately our summary of our findings earlier this week. So I don't know if everyone has that to look at, but essentially what we had found on March 29th was that all of the arrators that we looked at, they had components that were, that did not meet the manufacturer's recommendations. Whether or not those caused the fires is, is unknown. It's anyone's guess what actually started those fires, but all of those systems were, they had breakers that were oversized. One of them had wire that was undersized and they were all missing GFCIs. So we sent that over to Doug Xanter with Pelican Reserve and he has already worked with his electrical contractor to start implementing those changes. I don't know if, does anyone have any questions on, on this topic here?
I'm sorry.
This is the CVD meeting. See if anybody wants to make anything about the Oaks.
It's up. Yeah, there we go.
Quick question, Stephen. Who designed this?
Hold on a second.
Go unmute him.
Hey, guys. Am I back live?
Yeah, you're back.
You're back.
All right, so. I heard you.
Who designed this?
Yeah. So from what I gather from Doug was, I, I think Solitude was the contractor. Don't quote me on that, but I think they, they installed it. Maybe Bob Geppert knows.
Yeah, Solitude sold it to the the compressor's specs.
To, to what extent are we asking them to pick up the damage related costs?
That is unknown to me.
Doug is online. I don't see.
Ed, this is, this is Doug. What Solitude has offered to do, and Tony has a copy of one of the contracts, just we're not releasing them from any ability in the future from this issue if we find out it's more than what it is. But right now Solitude is doing this. The parts for cost with no uplift and no labor cost. So they have recognized, I, I, for, why would they do that if they didn't recognize they were part of the issue? And it's about 30%, 30 to 35% of what it would cost to do it. Because we had some of the estimates before we found out what it was to do this, these issues, to fix these issues. So what I recommend is that we proceed and execute on all the recommendations that are in the Tetra Tech letter here with a not to exceed price of 25K to correct all these issues.
So I take it what you're saying is, is that the Solitude?
Solitude.
Solitude was acting as a design builder?
I don't know if it was actually Solitude or Lake Master because it, I think it started with Lake Master.
It's the same company. Same company, just a different name.
Change their name. Okay. I just, I just wanted to verify that they recognize that they have a financial involvement in this and they're participating in the correction.
That is correct.
They are covering the majority of the cost in the correction, Ed.
That's all I got.
And interestingly enough, Ed, just as an aside, but the analysis by Tetra Tech did not reveal any deficiencies. There was opportunities to make it better, but there wasn't any inherently incorrect. Stephen, did I say that correctly?
I mean, it's hard to say. I mean, you know, could these oversized breakers have caused it? Yeah. Could the GFCI? Maybe. I mean, it's hard to say. These things run like all the time. We open these boxes. They're covered in, you know, grass clippings. I mean, the bottom line is they weren't installed per the manufacturer's specifications. So we need to start there and, you know, if they continue to catch on fire, then obviously it's, it's a product problem.
So.
And that's why we've not given them any release, anyone any release by, by doing these modifications or correct these issues. We're not releasing them of any liability in the future if something else comes up.
Thanks, Doug.
So it sounds like there was, what was identified was potential points of failure, but the point of failure was not, was not absolutely confirmed.
The first two or three years of service under the original equipment was flawless. It's only the newer equipment. There's a lot of variables in there, but now we've got them addressed.
But Solitude hasn't.
They're not back. They're cleaning up.
They're not claiming responsibility, but they're
stepping up to fix it.
But they're, okay, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's a good way of putting it, Doug.
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
Anything else?
All right, I'll move, I'll move on to our task authorization status update then. Going through them, we're going to talk about the high school later today. Designs on the lake bank restoration. I was hoping to have this to you guys earlier. We're queued up for our drafter to finish the plans. So you guys should have those pretty soon. Construction management is ongoing for the lakes. We've got Lake 59 that's in construction. We had a little bit of water rise from the weekend storm, but it wasn't anything that prevented construction. So they're still working through that. Flowway weir adjustments. We sent a draft set, 90% set of plans to Chris on Friday. Working with our stormwater folks in Orlando, they're trying to wrap up the ERP permit application and they promised me it should be done Monday. So hopefully Monday I will be able to say that, you know, we can move forward with this project and, and get it rocking and rolling. So that should be forthcoming. Commerce roundabout, CEI is ongoing. It's pretty obvious to everyone that drives around here. Just looking through these, the rest of them, I mean, unless you guys have questions on them, the rest of them are pretty self-explanatory.
Go ahead. Steve, Ed, again, what's the time that we're looking at? I, I guess we're in the process of preparing the application for what? The ERP?
Yeah. So we'll have the ERP application completed on Monday. We'll sit, we'll send that to Gateway. Everyone can get a chance to review it or we can, you know, with your permission, get it in the works and the permitting, because that's going to take a while.
That's what my question was. What's the time in permitting ballpark?
I mean, first comments will be within 40 days from them. I'm, I'm assuming because of the scope of work, we're probably going to get an RAI. So it'll probably be 30 to 45 days for first comments and then, you know, three weeks after that for our response.
So just, just, just in about time for the first hurricane?
There you go.
That's how it works.
So Stephen, I, I think you know this question's coming. So can you, can you talk us through the, the flowway weirs project? I mean, my concern was with meeting with staff. We approved this in March of last year.
Correct.
I think it was about a two-year project from beginning to end. And we are still at the point of where we're waiting for, for those plans. Where are we at with that? And, and this is one of those items that we, you know, is a great example of how we have to do a better job of, of when we're when our dates are adjusted, those, those change orders, change requests have to come through. Because I don't know if the board is, is truly aware of the, the length this, this task and it's sitting out there with and I'm sure there, there's probably some work going on, but in my eyes, when I look at it, we're, you know, almost eight months behind schedule.
Right. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's a fair point. And I'll just back it up to the beginning. So the original model was, was built by one of our staff. His name was Ton Moi. When we started this project, he was working on it and we had great progress, but pandemic happened. His visa was up for renewal. They stopped all renewal applications from being processed. And he had to, to leave the country. Since then, we, we had a lag in finding someone who could pick the project up. We've kind of been bouncing it around through, you know, whoever was available and we're doing the best we can with, you know, losing that key member. We, since then, do have staff that understand the model, can work with it and have got us to design. We're at 90, you know, 100% design plans right now that Chris has, you know, pending any comments. So we're right there at the finish line. They're wrapping up the permit, permitting efforts are almost done. So you know, to your point, yeah, we are behind schedule and I apologize for that. You know, and hopefully going forward, it'll be, you know, a lot smoother. That's pretty much it.
Quick question. Chris, what, what do we have in the budget signed for this year for this expenditure of this work? Construction wise?
In the budget for construction?
Yeah.
There's zero dollars for this year. We, we funded this study, which is about 175,000 over a two-year period.
So at this point in time, this, the construction of this, which is the next step, is yet to be funded.
Next fiscal year.
So in essence, we haven't lost anything at this point in time.
Be in the neighborhood.
No harm, no foul. As long as it doesn't get deferred out. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's going to the neighborhood of $500,000 to change the weirs.
Yeah, I, I questioned, I wanted to see what the design is to get to that, that kind of a number. But my, my point was if it's not in the budget and we had the approval of the plans today, we're not going to be doing nothing. We haven't got no money. So to me, while we may be behind as far as the plans, we aren't behind the construction because we can't do it anyway. But we don't want to lose the next construction season, which means we need to get this thing approved and get into the budget another $500,000. Is that what you think it is?
That's what Tetra Tech has quoted.
So, I mean, that estimate is based on a couple of different factors. I mean, we're assuming that they're going to have to do sheet piling in the flowway, which is a substantial cost. That's in our estimate because that's the worst case scenario. That might not be necessary and that would reduce the cost a lot.
You, you mean like a cofferdam?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. So I appreciate it, Stephen. And I think now that we, you know, have you as a single point of contact, these are just things that I would, I would expect that would just tighten up our, our project planning. So if there's, one, if we're going to miss a date, let's just be a little more transparent. If you run into issues, we've been partners for a long time. So just, let's try to drive a little more transparency.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else for Tetra Tech? Okay. Thanks, Stephen.
Hey, guys. I'm going to stay on the line because we're going to talk about the high school, but I'll be here muted.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, speak, maybe save some time on that. Are we even ready to proceed on the high, is this, is the transfer, the turnover?
Utility asset.
Just utilities.
Have you seen it?
Yes, the utility package.
Okay, you've seen it?
Yes.
Okay. I was wondering if everybody had seen it because I thought, if you haven't seen it, why are we talking about it? Okay.
Yeah, I was providing a copy.
Okay.
I was. District manager report?
Sure. And I have a few items that I wanted to bring up. Tomorrow we'll have Asset Works, who was hired by our carrier Preferred Government Insurance Trust. They're going to be onsite doing appraisal of all our district properties. You know, any additions that we've had. And also over in Pelican Reserve, we're using the reserve study and the maintenance agreement to highlight those additions of assets. And where that really comes in is you do have a storm. And if you can show to FEMA that you have the item insured and your carrier, you've exceeded their limits or they deny the coverage, then FEMA will step in. But if those items are not on your list of insured, they will not. So like some of our other lists, it's a little antiquated vehicles, but we'll be spending time with them all day tomorrow on field. Then there'll be some follow-up also. Pelican Reserve Boardwalk is underway. That's a million dollars. Plan to issue a notice to proceed to Marine Contracting Group for May 3rd. They're going to actually start some demolition a little sooner. The completion date is October 1st for that project. And we did ask them for verification in writing that the project was exempt from a water management district permit. They had that opinion, but we wanted it formalized. Roundabout at Commerce Lakes. You may have seen, and we've passed it out to all the HOAs and their cams and folks, the latest PR work that's out there. And they're, they're going to shift that construction over to the east side of the road in a couple of weeks. Moving along with that, the utility work should be done in about three weeks on that project. Two change orders associated with it. One, the six-inch force main at the northwest corner due to the proximity, and this was designed, the two force mains running north and south, wasn't feasible to install two insertion valves we had planned. And that was to be able to isolate that system during a shutdown.
Twelve wasn't impacted? Twelve inch wasn't impacted?
No.
So it was far enough out of the way?
Yes, sir. It's down. And, and we were originally going to go ahead and put, put a couple of insertion valves in there. And so what we're going to do now, the alternate requires a shutdown of the system. So I'm sure Kenny will be nervous about that. And, you know, we'll be turning pumps on and off and they're going to cut in a valve on the existing six-inch line.
Just turn off the water down there so they don't drink.
Yeah, well, and that'll also impact the bike path. If you look at it, they call it a no-cost change order. Maybe it's no cost because the insertion valves are going to be 10,800, plug valves are $300. So it's a no-cost change order. And we're also hit with a, call it a change order for $2,994 to remove two streetlights that were in the construction zone. And Florida Power came out and said they wouldn't let Wright remove them. They're just redundant. The poles have already been de-energized. They're just in the way. The new streetlights will take over. So they want to get them out of the project area. Unfortunately, we pay the utility bill. So Florida Power said there's a maintenance component in that. Those streetlights are yours. You know, a couple of years ago, we took over the lighting accounts because the POA was going to shut the lights off and turn the road dark.
So this is going east?
Yes, sir. So those so we'll be, we'll be picking up the tab for that. And we were just going to do it directly as the customer bin. And I'll chase after the county, see if we can get some cost share. But it's like the other utilities in there, they're your utilities. You pay to move them. Roundabout at Griffin Drive, another million dollars coming up. Free application meeting for potential bidders for the 16-inch force main project. We expect that to happen in the next couple of weeks. Tony's been reviewing the documents. They've been getting the advertisements ready. That's the new six-inch force main cutting over Gateway Boulevard down Gateway to Griffin and then
16.
16.
16.
And then from Griffin to our existing lift station over on 7-Eleven. The purpose is we can do all that work, get those valves in place, get that new force main in place before they start the roundabout. That'll take about 75 or 80% of our work out of that roundabout project.
And risk.
Oh, and if, if we went ahead and re, re-did the existing ones and worked in there, we would be sending it across right on the corner of 7-Eleven, which is full of every utility in the world you could think of. And we did get a easement from the folks at KO Plone and we're working on a construction easement of them because it'll be a jack and bore. And we had a couple more meetings with HOA folks, Fine Crest this week in Bristol Park, talking about district budget, agenda items and the president's council. We were also met with the board on Hampton Park about potential insertion of a bypass bump at their main lift station. And we met them onsite, showed them that we'll be attending one of their meetings on May 4th to get into particulars.
Assistant station at the pool?
Yes, sir. And it's a master station and we, 22, 23, it's in our capital. But when you start talking about landscaping and moving aerator pumps and some of the issues there, we're just getting out in front of it. And, and otherwise, next three to four months, we were moving into a very busy budget season. Very busy utility rate case coming up. Some high dollar capital items when you're looking at the weirs, streetlights, irrigation, sidewalks. So there's going to be a lot on your plate and a lot of decisions to be made. Swimming pool. And I've been talking to some of the HOAs and laying a lot of these issues out. And I said, it's your community. We need your input. Whether you want to chat in at a meeting, get in touch with your board of supervisors, but it's time for you to establish the priorities. It's your community, your housing values. And I've had several positive comments from people even on the trees. They said, we'll pay an extra $50 on our assessment if it pays to do the root pruning and the guards on the trees. And I had some people say, well, our bond's paid off. We'd rather spend the money enhancing the community and the infrastructure and preserving our housing value. I haven't really had any negative comments yet. So that's all I, all I have today and I'll bring Laura up for business manager report.
I have one thing to add on to Chris's. He mentioned about the president's council. So we were looking at a potential date to have that. And we thought, we looked out about a month. So we're looking at possibly having it on Wednesday, May 12th, like 4:30 to 6:00. We would ask people to RSVP in Georgia. We'll work on putting together a nice invitation. And we'd ask, you know, the people to RSVP so we could know how many, what kind of refreshments to provide. We just figured since it's edging into dinner time, we want to have something, but we were kind of like dinner. So like maybe those sandwiches or water and soda, whatever, if we can figure that out. But that's the date that we're looking at right now because that gives us enough time to get it out there and give them time to respond, give us time to plan. So it's about a month away.
What's our expectation from, from the board's perspective? How are we going to manage? I know, I, I mean, I brought the idea up to resurrect that. But how, how do we, what's our restrictions as far as do, is, is it myself? Is it? But how how do we, what's our restrictions as far as do is is it myself? Is it open to everyone? What?
If it's open to everybody, then it has to be publicly noticed and minutes taken on behalf of the board.
Which probably would
You want to do that anyway.
Yeah, that's what I do.
You want to do that anyway.
Going probably be with Green is the only one that has a lot of associated with an association, but I think we can have everybody here.
What's what was, Chris, when you and I mean, we haven't really talked about the content or the structure. It was more, hey, let's let's throw it out there, see if there's interest, and then we'll tighten it up as we go, but uh
If if I can, uh the pro forma within Pelican, it's it's an advertised event. Any resident of Pelican can attend and get on the speaking if they have an item. But it's a basically, it is a round table of all of the presidents. And it is run, and there are meetings kept by the property manager in our particular case. And then whatever events or items are brought up, mostly it's informational, and that's disseminated by the presidents and also by council with a a weekly or a monthly uh agenda packet of what what has transpired. But that way, everybody in all of the communities that are affected, like within Pelican, know what everybody else is working on and doing. And some simple things like uh post orders and stuff like that, if you're changing it. And it can get to be tree removal if we're taking the oats out, you know, what are we doing it consistently? But it's it's mostly an informational sharing meeting. And when there's community issues, they can be addressed.
You're just talking about master associations, not sub-associations. Masters associations, not sub-associations.
I think that's that was
And I think is it a question more related in regards to us, board members attending?
Yeah, it was, you know, are we gonna structure it so everyone, the board members, the board members can can attend or should attend? Or, you know, it it's more around structure now that there's interest. So how we're gonna structure it, do we invite the presidents and their cams, or is it just the presidents? Uh, if it's public, then you would have, it would be open.
Better invite the cams, believe me.
That's what I was thinking, presidents in there.
Because the presidents, for the most part, are not going to do any of that notification. It's gonna be the cams. It's gonna be extra work, and they're gonna complain about it.
Well, there's probably the most, they're probably the most knowledgeable too about what's what's going on and maybe where the issues are as opposed to, you know.
So I think the big thing is you need to have an agenda of what's going to come up.
Sure, it has to be structured.
And and yeah, some of the things that we're talking about, the expenses and the impact on rates, that's right at the top of the list.
So let me just send it back to Chris and Laura just for your comments.
Yeah, I was I was looking at it, and I've talked to people to, you know, the first meeting, more of an informal meeting greet, but have each of the people and put a podium and a microphone up there and little social hour to start and go around and meet everybody and talk to them informally. But then get up and say, okay, we're gonna talk about the budget. We're gonna talk about utility rates, whatever you'd like to, and then allow the people to comment.
Let's do it in reverse then.
Yeah, are there that many cams within the various?
Oh, good lord, yes.
I mean, we don't
I got sixteen and I've got seven cams.
But it would be your master.
For the rest, for the rest of the other communities of Gateway, same seven keep interchanging, hopefully. I mean, we have a few, but
It's possible.
There's an awful lot of overlap.
Some, not not a lot. I know four share the same cam that I have now.
Yeah, we, that's what kind of what we have.
But why can't this being be done as a workshop to where we work with those people, the public's invited, but you're not, you you had the public there and it's an open, open.
Nobody comes in. Nobody comes.
It will, when you start talking about parks, swimming pools and tens of millions of dollars.
Okay.
You will have it full.
But it is a, if we have a workshop, is that not open?
It's open, but they can't talk.
Well, yeah, you have greater ability to talk with yourself.
Well, that's the way I would probably, my my idea was to have a structure as more of a workshop than uh that way we control it. There's a little more open discussion. Uh, we do have an agenda and uh and structured items, but it's more of a round table.
With the public in here.
But the public in here, but they just
Yeah, what I've seen some workshops depending upon the number of people involved, the board may be up here, participants who
Yeah.
you have dialogue with maybe sitting here. So that's where the dialogue is with. The presence of the 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 larger groups, I'll call it.
We have to give a seven day notice or a fourteen day notice?
Seven.
Seven, that's what I thought, okay.
And and the presidents themselves appointed or voted for a chairman and a vice chairman, they they've got structure like that. That controls the agenda and the other things.
And we could hold it, um, if you like, open air over at the park, you know, and just
Probably be honest, I mean, if we can fit everyone out, but in here, it might be a little tight.
So we would know like how much room we were getting.
You know.
How many are there total? Fifty?
About that. And
Fifty plus cams, you're downed up to a hundred. Say half of them show up, you're back to fifty. Hey, go work in here.
Yeah, I'd say I'd say we'd probably get realistically thirty or thirty five people. I mean, I've gotten a lot of interest in it.
Depends on what you say.
Yeah.
If you put it out that there is going to be discussions of things that you know that we're talking about, soccer, big bucks, swimming pool, big bucks, you will have a roomful.
Well, I mean, the the expectation would be is they all attend. I mean, that's, you know, in order to have, in order to have people representation, we really want, and we're not gonna do it every, you know, I think the idea is once a quarter.
Yeah, that was what we talked about.
Which is, you know, and the way I would structure it is we would have our meeting, and then afterwards, we would have, you know, uh social gathering. So think about that when we're looking at venues.
It's way too difficult to move stuff out there in that garage now with all the equipment. So that's that's an help. You almost have to go to one of the churches.
I was gonna say, why can't we just go to the church, the Trinidad?
Well, why don't you guys work on locations?
Sure.
Yeah.
An agenda.
And the agenda, and if we can make sure we socialize that with the agenda with the board, um enough in advance so we can provide input.
But right now, it's tentatively May twelfth?
Yes.
Or actually, no, the the school too, because now the school is also renting the cafeteria, which is it would be even closer for people.
Well, so one option is, I mean, the school has the pavilion in the back that's open air.
I just wonder if it's windy and rainy.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, it might be more comfortable inside, to be quite honest. So just let us know what our options are and what your preferred choices.
Okay.
Okay.
I have one other thing then too, um what Doug and I had talked about the Paychex HR solution. We want to do a pilot. I had brought it up before the board. I think the last time I talked to it, it costs us an extra seven thousand dollars to have an HR generalist.
Annually.
And well, yeah, from what we're paying right now for the for the team that I have, it'd be an additional seven thousand dollars annually to have that um to have that HR generalist. Uh, the lady at Paychex is just waiting to pull the trigger. All I gotta do is say yes. Um, she'll have the paperwork to me. We'll have the person on boarded within two weeks because they'll pay our next payroll cycle. The reason for that, um, we we need, we that's a, it's a big gap that we have right now here is the HR area. I I can do it. It's not what I got hired to do, and it's taking away from my ability to perform things I was actually brought in to take care of. And I think to have, to spend an extra seven thousand dollars to have someone in HR available whenever we're here, I can call her. She'll take care of training. They'll do an interview to find out what our needs are. They'll help with training. They'll help with job descriptions. They'll help do, um, if we have to do, like, rate people up, they'll help do that. They'll help with performance reviews. They'll do our forms. They'll do all of that stuff, and it's all part of that fee. There's no extra cost for that.
The one question, and and my original stance on this was that I felt like we needed to have someone, someone on site. But I think we need to get something up and running to really identify what we really need. So we, I think we might have some ideas, but if we can run this for a pilot for a couple of months, see, and it's more cost effective, to be quite honest. And then that way, as we go into new budgeting season,
We could take a look.
What we can take a look at.
It's a month to month contract, so we're not under any obligation. If we decide it's not working, we just say, hey, we don't want to do it anymore, and they're like, okay, we're done. There's no
And I think Suzanne Boy was also
Suzanne Boy also thought
Yeah, she was
So she and I were both on board.
Yep, and um the thing, it wouldn't just be me that would have access to this person. It would be anyone that I tell her, like, anyone that I let her know, like, Brian would have access, Kenny would have access. I would let Austin, have Austin talk to her to do the training for the safety meetings, something like that. They would all be able to to contact this person and and ask questions.
The one question that I have is, I think you stated before that staff would not have direct access to this point of contact.
And I, after talking with the lady at Paychex, she felt that that was the right thing to do. We actually have a policy in our handbook of the proper way to step through if you have an issue, if it's with your manager, if it's with whoever, what the proper chain of command is, and it does not involve HR.
Well, because we never had, we've never
Yeah, but there, I mean
Is that, I mean, is that negotiable? Can we?
The new handbook's being reviewed.
Not the handbook, I'm saying, just with paycheck. Is that their recommendation is not to have staff directly interact? If we had an escalation process
The reasoning is because they they felt that um and I agree because having been in that position, that the manager gets completely left out of the loop.
Yeah.
If people go to HR.
Well, but here's my, here's my question. If we can redesign a process where, because the whole point of having HR is to have a direct line to HR. They sit a little bit independent of your organization. So maybe as a takeaway, can we talk with them about having some direct interaction that however we design it, so it's not just an open policy, but you know, something a little more structured.
Does their fee go up proportionally?
No.
If you do
No.
If you if have direct access to them?
It doesn't.
So is there an allocated number of man hours that you're buying in a sense, in essence?
It goes based on the number of employees we have.
So it's unlimited based on that cost structure. So we could talk offline about that, but I think it's a, I think it's a good idea.
You're in shock.
It's cost effective.
Yeah, I think we may want to do is I think the goal right now is May seventh, the first meeting in May, is to bring the revised HR manual back to the board.
The sixth, yeah.
The sixth is
Yeah, that's good. You can come the seventh, I'll be here. By the sixth.
So I think what might be appropriate is to have both of them on the agenda, the same dates, the board's comfortable with everything meshes.
Okay.
Well, it's a job description approval of the HR specialist.
And do you feel like, are we able to bring that?
So you want me to wait then? I really, I really need this person on boarded.
No, I think we can go ahead and
Okay, you're talking about like, like if we were to hire someone to have that job description.
Just to make sure, but I think what we can do then, the board could do is if there's some things when we see, when the board reviews the HR manual, that paycheck, and it's a paycheck.
It's Paychex generated HR manual.
So make sure, yeah, if you hire the personnel in May sixth, when the board reviews the manual, make sure it meshes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And then I have a person, I have a direct point of contact, and if you want to make changes to the manual as well, because they're the ones that actually
If you can send Suzanne out the scope also of the of the generalists.
Gee, yeah, I don't, I will. I don't have, I don't have like, I have some PDF forms I can send her, yeah.
Thanks.
Do we need a, we need approval?
I would say yes, just the same site, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's supposed to be my ten thousand dollar threshold, but I just, I would prefer that you guys are on board with it.
I I think it's a good
So we will need, we will need a motion to uh to move forward with the Paychex HR representative platform as a pilot alternative to if a part time HR person.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Guy, do you vote?
No.
Mr. Guy?
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
I voted yeah.
Yes, okay, great. Thank you, Bill. Um, do we need to take any action now on the revisions for the merits, or are we gonna wait?
No, I want to wait.
Okay.
I I wanna, I figure I'll discuss that when we bring up the board, the salaries and the budget discussions.
Makes sense.
So I got one question while you're up there. Uh, we have a two step authentication program now?
Yes.
Hey, I'm gonna need some help with it.
Okay.
Because it doesn't like me.
Okay.
Two step for what?
To get into our board book.
Oh, okay, yeah, in the uh
Okay. It's asking me to scan things and put apps in my phone, and I
Okay.
Wait, 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 what what are you talking about?
Before I can view, review the board book. Okay, for this, but in the next one, there's gonna be a two step process. Somehow it's gotta be connected to the phone and codes. Yeah, I know. That's why I'm bringing it up.
It's actually, it's, it'll take seconds to set up, so if you need help
For this new process.
Yeah, I'm willing to assist.
Anytime you want to come over, Laura's in the office.
I'm here. I'm here.
All right, thank you.
Great.
I hadn't heard about it. It's probably a great idea.
They just flipped the switch, not last night, the night before.
It's for the uh the board book.
It's it's to make sure that in case somebody's credentials get compromised, um, it just puts an extra layer of security in so that someone like, if my my Microsoft credentials got compromised, nobody can get into my email without having that second layer. Uh, there's a code that you get generated on my phone that I have to type in in order to get into my email and everything. It's just to give us a little extra security as a district.
Probably a great
It was a Janobi suggestion.
Okay.
If you got got him to understand it, then you'll have a real challenge when I come in.
I'm used to it. Challenge accepted.
All right, thanks, I appreciate it. Chris, who's next?
Brian.
Go on, Brian.
Having the updates or anything you want to send the board on lakes and drain cleaning?
I have nothing official, but we did start over in Daniel's Preserve with MRI. We have a forty eight inch pipe that's completely been covered up with rocks and other issues that I guess
Inside, you told me.
I'm talking from the top and all the way in. Been a mitered in on the end of it, and the guy pulled out a boulder about that big. So we're gonna have to get an excavator over there Monday to get a little bit, he wants to start getting stuff out. We did punch through it, so we got water to move from pond to pond. Uh, because that was the only way it was gonna move, but
That was construction. That didn't float downstream.
This is all construction.
That's back, it's back drilling, back doing the deal, and nobody ever inspected.
The worst part is it was twenty three feet out at eight feet deep. So there're gonna be a wild damage preserve. I'm aware of it. I'm gonna get hit with a change order. If you gotta let me know because we didn't figure we'd have to get an excavator to pull the rocks out of the back of it, but
They didn't try to, they couldn't clamshell it.
He punched through it with his vac on, but the problem is the rocks are too big.
Too big.
Divers can't pull them out, so I got some pictures of some rocks we're pulling out, but it it's gonna be a slow process in Daniels. We did start there for this reason. We didn't, we're gonna run into. Problem is, we have two more lake interconnects. I have a feeling it'll be the same way.
They did it underwater, that when they both the
Yeah.
Bring the dirt out, put the next load of pipe in. If there's a rock in the front of the bucket, it just pushes it into the last piece of pipe you had.
So
Just keeps going on and on and on.
If you wish to see it next week, give me a call. I'll bring you out, show you, but it's it's gonna be a slower process. Well, we luckily though, but we started the worst first, so that is going on. Uh, pond fifty nine, we started, like Steve said on the phone call, we had a couple inches of rain, but we went ahead and started the dirt around it, so that gives that pond to go down a little bit before we bring the rock in, so another week to two weeks for the run early.
The feedback's been really positive with Sonny Bro.
We've been uh doing a due diligence. I give credit to Matt Tire over there. We're kind of preventing traffic much as possible on the side streets, so you're not on Pebble Brook itself. He's limited how many trucks are coming in at a time. You know, I got two or three, so that way they're not stacked on top of each other, so
I was out there this morning. They had a guy kind of directing traffic, but even just how they've been able to maneuver within that tight space.
What scares me, I was only gonna do ones over here, neck of the woods, gateway greens.
Have you found any uh broken off mitered in sections that have rolled out that have bombed yet?
Uh, we do have one that we're gonna get to is over by the brewery.
So you found that too?
We we found one.
That's exactly consistent with what happened.
Did you look at the plans? Because I was of the understanding that every inner pond transfer in Gateway that was done by Johnson Johnson in the, under the original water quality management plan, was supposed to be forty eight inch with a head wall. How in the hell they get a mitered in section?
They have a forty, well, the bigger ones, we find some head head walls, some doesn't. We thought this had a head wall. There's no head wall. It's just a mitered in forty eight on the end of it.
But I mean, what did the plan show?
You can't find as built. And this goes back to Mercedes did that one over there. Uh, we did find, like I say, when we get into Timber Creek, we're gonna have to take concrete baffles out because those concrete baffles choked at forty eight and about twelve inch pipe. So those have to be saw cut out, so that way we won't have the flooding like we had last time over there. But I'm confident Mike's team's, it's just gonna slow. We knew it.
What was the, what was the uh at the invert elevation of the uh mitered in section? Did you have a great big hump of silt and stuff that was
It's totally covered. That they just
All the way up?
All the way up. So the only way we found the pipe, had to put a diver in there.
So were you activating that material to haul it off also?
We're gonna have to.
Otherwise, you just gotta shoot it out into the lake.
Pretty much, yeah.
The worst part is, is the only way to find the end of it, with the vac contract, you're pushing it out until you see bubbles up. And the diver's going down and say, hey, I found it now. But then when you come to find out, he's trying to put his hand back in there, and the whole thing, the whole pipe's been covered over. So yeah, those three over there is gonna take time, and we're aware of it, but
Are those divers scuba, or are they connected to a controls truck?
Actually, what he's doing is uh, you don't have tanks on, but you have them in your, he has a device set up. What he basically does is it's a filtration system from up top. You don't have a scuba tank on you. You know what snooba is?
Yeah, it's like a line.
It's got a line in your mouth. You can sit on it for hours because it's constantly
We watched them when they did it in Pelican Command Vehicle. And you could watch with the, you could talk to them.
Yeah, well, he's not doing that.
Okay.
We're not going deep enough. Thank goodness for that, but we do have some curiosity critters, a couple gators. We have a seven footer that just refuses to leave him alone, but luckily, no incidents.
Yeah, we had a guy in the water beating him away too.
He's just, this one just won't go away. It's like, hey.
Somebody better is bait.
Keep the diver safe.
That's what the guard was. He was
So we do have one, yeah, one kind of looks out for that one. Uh, the two inches of rain. I'm kind of half staffed this week, next week, one with COVID and one's on vacation. So me and Rick, we did get over there. Uh, oak trees did damage, of course, with the leaves and the storm rains. I hit Gateway Boulevard Monday, Tuesday, then I hit Gateway Boulevard Monday, Tuesday, then we hit the side streets Wednesday and today. We'll probably finish them up tomorrow, but I'm pretty confident we got it back down.
We, we need a vac truck probably going around to a lot of these inlets. That two, 2.3-inch rain just took everything out of the yards, put it in the street. We're doing our street cleaning every two weeks at about 3,500 bucks a whack, just trying to keep up with it. But that rain on Sunday just took care of it.
Well, don't you think we should?
We gotta get these drainage lets cleaned down.
I think we need to wait like a month or?
We've been saying that for the last two months.
Basin 5, which is half of Gateway Greens, will be cleaned on this go-around for in October.
So once you get it on the rotation, we have not had a recurrence of issues.
So the good news.
We do it every, so we have a frequency, established frequency. And we've kept the, the catch basis clean, the inlets.
What's your frequency, do you know?
I, I don't have it off the top of my head. I know it's no greater than every three years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Ours will be that way too, once we get there. But other than that.
Anything else, Bron?
I do have a few things.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Brian and I visited, well, this whole week. So let's start with the dog park, cause I think that's gonna be easier. So I visited, I, I, I visited the dog park about five times the last week, different hours. Laura actually worked also on a report of the high peak hours, so we could see, you know, how can we come up with a solution in regards to all the holes in one side of the park not being as great a shape as the other? I sent Brian my observations and I believe I copied Chris, what I observed, what opportunities that I thought we have. And then in one of the emails, I, I included Tony because I think the direction that we're given or instruction was that we wouldn't allow residents to make modifications to our property for liability reasons and so forth. And I think Brian.
We took care of that.
You.
What happened down at the dog park, I'll just be polite here.
Short version.
We put benches down there for people to sit on. People put their dogs on the benches and their little paws went between the slat about that big. So somebody took it upon themselves to put wood in between those, drilled through our nice benches.
Between the slats?
Yes.
All of them.
My benches were not meant for the animals, they're meant for people. So I told Rick, take these out, cause one of them overhung about half inches, so somebody gets hurt on us, we'll be back on those. So we run, remove the slats in between the benches. Those have been removed. The dog park is scheduled to be sodded the week of April 26th.
Let's back up for a second. So what's the solution for the gap in between the?
It's meant for people. Your butt will not have a problem fitting on that bench.
Yeah, I mean.
Dog, not for dog claws.
And my, but my only concern is that, that wouldn't that open us up? If we've got, if we have equipment out there that could pose a risk, is there a different seating top we can?
We have two different types of benches down there. Some of the slats are so close you can't fit them. The other ones are probably half inch.
Yeah.
We can remove those, those benches, ones with the problems, cause most of the time the people don't sit on them anyway. They bring their own chairs.
Could just be that, you know, no animals on the benches or on the seat. And I think that's it.
I mean, that's great if you can, if you tell your dog not to get up on the bench. And if there's someone at every bench at the time where, you know, I want to say is like, I don't disagree with you. I completely, you know, it's a bench, however, the design that we have out there may not be the best design with unintended consequences.
You want us to fix it, let my staff do it the proper way.
And that's what.
We can do that.
Even if we reach out to the bench manufacturer and say, hey, is there a solid top or can we adjust it where there's?
There are solid, just for curiosity, I was just checking dog park benches around and there are some that are, are solid and there are some with the slats and it's just a matter of what the board wants to do. But I, I, I think the exposure is minimal for that.
The, the bigger issue is the sods that.
Sods, I had a meeting with Cheryl and Dolly back in February. They were complaining about sod. We met mainscape dinner, Jim, myself and L. L told me, do not plan anything or changing sod out through the end of April, cause it's not gonna take off. It's not the time of year to do the sod. It's scheduled to do the week of April. I've met with Freddie. I said, make sure your sod guy can do it. We're gonna do the large dog park first. You resod the whole thing. You have to shut it down four to six weeks, give or take, to get the sod to take off. In the meantime, the residents are using the small dog park. Once we get the large one sodded and it takes off, Flavi had a good idea, we can rotate parks back and forth, maybe a month off one, month off with the other. It's originally designed for dogs that are 18 inches or lower, go on the small side, dogs bearing that on the big. But unfortunately, the bigger dogs do more damage. Small dog park, there weren't any problems. It's the large one. So we're gonna take care of the large one first. So we then after that, there's problems in the small one, we'll address that and fix it. What I suggest and Jim and L, we looked at it, we're prying up doing the sod twice a year now. Probably in April, in September, October, while it's still in rainy season or as needed in the fall, so we don't run into this issue again.
What's, what's ballpark the price?
That's why I'm getting ready from Freddie. Give me a quote. I have it. We allocate, I think, $10,000 for sod. I don't think it'd be that much, but.
Is it behia?
Well, no. Behia does not hold up. I've been telling Soya.
Soja?
Soja works the best for high-traffic areas. If you don't want that, then I suggest St. Augustine, which is the cheapest, cause it's gonna get tore up. You can't have that many traffic. The dog park is open six and a half days a week. It's only closed Thursday from 8 to 12.
Soja is very similar to Bermuda.
Right. Well, we pulled it up and looked at it now and both Freddie said, hey, suggest the Soja. It holds up better to higher traffic, especially with the dogs running. Either way, I don't, it's.
What's the price difference?
So we don't know.
We're gonna look at that. Like I say, Freddie's giving me a quote.
I just priced today, pallet of floor tan is 275, covers 400 square feet. That's not installed.
So we can do the cheapest, which would be the Augustine floor tan. Because I don't know how much one's gonna hold better than the other.
Do we have irrigation in there?
Yes, we do.
We do have.
Yes.
Okay, so let me just go backtrack back to the benches issues. So before we even go in and spend any money on benches, from every single day that I was there, there was zero days that any of the benches or the picnic table was being used. They were all using their own chairs that they were bringing in. And I don't know if that's something that's creating more work for, for staff, because some of the chairs are like beach chairs. Some are just patio chairs.
I've seen.
So, and, and, and when I met with them, they say, you know, we remove it, we usually put them back. They were always out there. If anything, I saw the day that one had a dog in the leash and the dog went almost under the chair and there was somebody sitting on it. So that, I think, is more of a liability than the bench itself. We do have some benches at the soccer park, don't we? And I think those are metal flats. If anything, switch them, so we don't have to spend any money. We just switch. We get the ones from the dog park, they're nice and new. Remove that little wood, put it up for the kids and have the ones that the kids have that is flat, put it at the dog park. However, they were not being used. And I believe we have 10 benches and picnic tables in total in there. It's a lot.
Yeah, we don't need that.
And to me, I, I agree with Flavia. I wouldn't buy anything else. You could probably remove those ones. There's still not be a problem. You've still got a picnic bench and other benches that are left, cause the personal chairs is what majority use on.
Yeah, we have more picnic tables and benches in the dog park than we do in the whole soccer.
And that's exactly what I said.
For 2,000, 3,000 people.
And that's exactly what I said then. So that was one. So that was an issue then against the bench. The second item was, I did ask a dog, I met with Dolly, I said, give me some ideas, what do you think? Because besides me, it is high traffic. What can you guys suggest? And they couldn't come up with anything. I said, well, how about us alternating the dog park? And we have, you know, the, you know, we take the small and large and one month will be or two months, whatever, until the rest becomes not good anymore and switch. She says she was gonna go back with some of the members and she was gonna let me know. She sent me an email. She says, everybody that she talked to, they were not opposed. They enjoy it.
The dog parks are the same, right? There's, it, one, the two dog parks are basically identical in structure. Like one is not, doesn't have anything.
The small, the small.
A little bit bigger.
It's a little bit bigger, yeah.
Yeah.
So the only thing that I wanna make sure is clear, when she says that they were not opposed, I do not know if she only reached out to the large dog people, because every time that I was there, all the dogs, with no exception, were in the small dog park. The large dog park was never used when I was there. So if she's asking the large dog people, which they're, they're gonna say yes, but so I don't know if maybe Laura could send out an email with that particular question, like this is one of the solutions that we can come up to. We're gonna have to do it anyways, when we put the new sod.
Why can't you put a snow fence down the middle of the small park and let both?
That's exactly.
You do have a fence down the middle of the large end of dog. There's already a fence there with a gate and everything.
What he's talking about in the.
When you shut down the one.
Put a, put a.
I've wider.
That's exactly.
Split the two dogs up, small and big. Snow fence doesn't go.
Just designate one side, small and big.
We can do that.
We can do that, yeah.
And the only thing that I have about rotating is we just need to maybe do some research to see, does that create more problems? So if you isolate the big dogs in one area, are you replacing that? You should be replacing that side less frequent than you are the small dog. If you rotate them every couple months, are you just?
Everything gets torn.
Are you, yeah, you're tearing everything up. So I just say before we, it's, we need to be looking at all the solutions, but we need to get some, you know, just reach out to the county or where I'm sure they.
County doesn't do what we do.
Yeah.
We went to Buckingham Park. County has grass and guess what? It's the same thing you got in the rideaway. When you tear it up, they don't care. They don't water it, they don't do anything with it. Here's your dog park.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen that. I saw some others too.
Uh, the big, the small, back and forth, that's good, but when you get a bigger dog bites a little dog.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm completely against making, you know, us forcing coming.
Wait, wait, wait till school board gets over here.
If you, if you put a big dog in with a small dog, they're assuming that risk and liability.
Co-mingle.
Vice versa.
So what, and I'll talk to staff when I get back, which is, we're basically the large sod will have to be replaced on this big dog park. We won't have a choice. We have to shut that one down, but once that's done, we could probably just do it twice a year.
And if we took out the benches, you know, and maybe some or whatever, or change them out, there's still those slabs there, so that's, you know.
Well, they weren't happy about. None of them were happy about the location of the benches. None of them were happy in regards to the not enough shade. And there's a lot of trees, more trees there than everywhere else. So that's it. One thing that I observed in three visits is, and I think it's really important for Laura, I don't know if it's Laura or you, to send out a reminder to all of the dog park members. The dogs are off-leash before they even entered the first gate out on the parking lot. I saw that almost every time. They don't use, if they don't wanna use the small dog, you know, what they're using, the non-fence area, and they're not picking up after their path. So there's this, the large dog park, the small dog park, and then the area that it's, where we have the fill, the dogs are just there. And the last time was like eight owners and I think nine. Oh yeah, just running all down by Latour's, all by the new community, all the way down there. So, um, you know, I think we need to have a reminders of the rule and then same thing, the usage. I, I do believe if we have the capability of turning the scan the same way that we have it with the bathroom on Thursdays, turn it off between the maintenance hours, because they were using their maintenance hours.
Here's what happened is when we changed vendors, maybe T, that didn't get reprogrammed back. So I had Laura going there now from 8 o'clock to 12 o'clock or set, actually 7 to 12 on Thursdays. It's closed for maintenance, so you can't get in.
Okay, and that's what I was gonna ask. Let's just, so we can scan it, but it won't open.
I'd almost, you know, I mean, I almost think you need to maybe close it down for a full day, a full week. And that way there's, you know, and it might be a little inconvenient, but if, if we wanna maintain the park, we have to make concessions. You know, there's a reason why we don't play on the, on the fields during the summer here. They, you know, those fields, that park has to have time to rest, just like everything else. And if we're gonna do maintenance, we should, we have to make sure we're doing maintenance, for one. But I wouldn't be opposed to shutting down. Don't you guys shut down?
So just on Monday. So what's the ticket for the sod to, what's ballpark?
Yeah, but he's waiting on it.
You're, oh, you're waiting on it.
I'm waiting on a quote. We have a budget up to 10,000 a year for it. So for both parks, small and large, but Freddie's gonna give me a quote this week, what's it gonna cost for a large dog park? And that's the one we have to do. The small one is in pretty decent shape, so.
Okay. Alright, well.
Well, that's for dog park. Now I have Latour's. So I visit Silver Lake today because we had some emails going back and forth with residents of Silver Lake. And I, I just wanna make sure that we actually have a full understanding of full removal and maintaining the Latour's bend. And, um, I am not opposed, and I think we should, at a minimum, be maintaining the Latour's bend from eight to 12 feet. That's no questions asked. Should be done, it's included in the contract period. We just have to hold the vendor accountable.
Eight to 12 feet at Silver Lake, everywhere.
Everywhere, there's some that are 20.
That's not the Latour's bench. The Latour's bench is defined to the two-foot depth. And if you have a six-to-one ratio, that is eight to 12. If you got a four-to-one, it's four to eight.
Well, we didn't add that when we added into the.
That's right, right straight out of the standards.
Correct. So there's some, they have no Latour's bend, like Silver Lake has, it's a silent deal, so it doesn't even tell you. So that's what I'm going is by the pond standards that we created and we adopted, which just says eight to 12, not to extend eight to 12 feet. It does not give you the direction, how do you measure those? And you wouldn't, because in the development order, it wouldn't be listed. So I'm not opposed to that. I think that needs to be done, period. But I think there's a confusion, and I think, and I'll clarify with Bob, is the residents took in and, and they were, and they were stating Bob's statement that we don't pay for that at Pelican. What they were talking about, it's this. It's full removal. And I don't, you don't do that, exactly. So that's what I think he needs to, so this is behind one of the homeowners. I mean, this was this morning. And this is not done by Aquagenics. This is actually the homeowner of this property that went into the next door property and he sprayed the whole 20 feet of the lake embankment. It usually should be there.
Is that, that's overkill?
Yeah, not from the vendor. So he had the vendor come and do this.
Resident doing it though.
The vendor went and did this, which at Pelican, they don't even do that even if the resident asks, because it's not good for the pond. And then the resident went and that wasn't enough. He went and he did this, but the other picture, he did the whole neighbor's entire yard. And then right at this location, we went, we took, we, we measured 12 to 18 inches of erosion. So looking at our pond standards, this is massive erosion all around the property. We shouldn't be spraying, because we're gonna create more erosion problem. So this is one that staff would go in and say, hey, your development order does not require. Now let's inspect the property. You know what? You have no erosion. Your water quality is good. There's no problem. We'll go ahead and remove it twice a year. I agree with that. This particular property and then the other properties in Silver Lake that you have this much of an erosion, you go in and you inspect and you explain to them, look, if you didn't have this erosion probably, problem, or if you didn't have that, then yes. Right now it's a no. And then we even addressed it on the pond standard and say, listen, because we don't also don't wanna come to them and say, hey, you have erosion and don't do nothing. It says in there, if we're gonna tell them no, because they have erosion, then we better come up with a plan to fix this erosion. Because I also don't want them to just hear from us, it has an erosion, we're not gonna do anything about it. But guess what? We have no money, because we spent all the money to fix the erosion. So we gotta be very careful when we say.
Well, why would we ever let a resident spray on his own?
And I think that's.
They shit near.
That's what I mean.
Like this, this is, he sprayed, he sprayed his neighbor's yard. And, and even if the neighbor gave permission, 20, LME shouldn't be there, period.
He shouldn't be spraying his own.
Period.
Period. What, what was he, was he trying to be the friendly neighbor for everybody to, what was he using around?
He didn't like the dog.
Well, he actually said that this is dollar weed. That's exactly what he said to us. This is dollar weed that he sprayed. You tell me, Ed, if you see any dollar weed in there.
And this is a silver light?
Yeah, that's silver light.
Well, you're, you're also contaminating the water.
Well, first of all, you shouldn't be in the LME spraying. That's the big.
Correct.
And then so here, so here's another example, and I think, you know, if it's gonna take us to take pictures, so I'm glad that we clarified that Pelican does not do this. So here's an example of a homeowner that says, I still have some Latour's behind my house. I don't see it.
I still have what?
Latour's behind my house. I don't see it.
And this gets silver light?
Yes.
But there's no requirement for so, Latour's on silver light.
Correct. And, but that is also erosion in the entire bank. And he can twice a year. They have maximized, they have maximized the request. So if he hadn't requested twice a year, and if there was Latour's, yes. But this to me satisfies a full removal.
See, with, with, what they got is escarpment, escarpment is caused by wave action, it's not caused by erosion off the yards. Big difference.
That's just, you know, the water drop, that's why you see the brown one, yeah.
Oh, this?
Yeah.
No, this is actually what the latoras was, this was, this was sprayed, so when he gets, yeah, so when he gets, exact, so when he gets sprayed, usually, it'll be, it's left like this, so they don't like this look, so then hand removal of all of this, it takes place to make it look like this.
Pays for that.
Looking at it. So that's what I think we need.
This is what it's supposed to.
So I thought.
It might be ugly, but that's.
Exactly, so that's why I thought pictures was gonna help you guys, because unless you guys go out on the field and understand, so two different things. Flavi is not opposed to the eight to 12.
When the water recedes, that is the expected appearance.
Yeah, so.
So it water fills back up.
You know, unless we suddenly have the money and the budget to go ahead and keep it beautiful, then we'll do it, but there's gonna be a cost for that, so. Again, I just want to make sure that I would like for us to, we'll have residents come in and request for removal, yes. Have staff go in, would they have 30 days, address it. If it falls within the categories of, yes, it qualifies for removal, remove it twice a year.
Well, and I, I, I had one thing too, if we have done any lake bank restoration on that pond, is also a point of consideration.
We have it.
Those are the lowest. I'm just saying, but that's, if we're looking at, you know, a decision tree, that, that should be part of it, because it's one thing if we've spent money.
Because what, what you're setting yourself up for is to totally remove when the water level recedes, and then to replant when the water comes back, because you want latoras.
Oh, they don't, they, they don't want no planting all latoras, they, they don't even want that, but that particular pond is not a low priority. That particular pond was originally phase two, and that was my question then, if it's phase two, if the engineer said it's phase two because he needs it out of all the phases, that means he needs it. So then don't come back to us and say he doesn't need it, because we need to take the engineer's word on this.
Well, we're, we're gonna have to get to a point where we're gonna set a standard, which we have, but if the, if your D O is silent, or if, or if you call for no latoras, I don't think we can absorb the cost of doing that, because it puts us in, in a, in a situation where it's, it's not healthy for that, you know, lake, we're almost encouraging erosion, and that's just my opinion.
And it's exactly, and it's exactly. And that's exactly what we tried to say, not only that.
At some point, at what, at what point do we maintain, uh, financing and, and support of the ponds? And at what point do we defer that back to potentially the HOA if they want to?
We own, we, we own the pond.
We own the pond, but we're, we're trying to meet conditions for the health of the pond, and the aesthetics are second.
Yes.
And then, and that's why I think Brian is having a meeting tomorrow.
I have a meeting tomorrow with, uh, Steve Pean, he's a PhD from ATM. Waldorf actually referred me to this company, they deal with water quality and erosion. And what we want to discuss is, and I sent him the pond standards and our water samples and all that for the last year. I want to make sure staff does, our water quality does not go the wrong direction. And these folks, they're the experts.
Yeah, it should be water flow.
It's not related to water quality, most of it isn't, I mean, we're talking about maintaining the bank, healthy bank.
But we're causing erosion where we shouldn't be either.
But that may or may not hurt the quality of the water. Where I, where I'm focused is, uh, the water quality kind of takes care of itself when you have healthy latoras and a healthy pond.
That is correct.
Right.
And luckily for us, that D O doesn't require it, but our ones on the FPL easement do.
Require.
D, it's latoras, and luckily, Silver Lake flows into that.
Yeah.
So you're offsetting it as you go down the water.
We, we had said months ago that we wanted the engineer and staff to redefine our priorities for the ponds. Have we got that yet?
That's why I'm meeting these folks, Waldorf was supposed to do it, that gentleman from there, on top of the concern, what we're gonna do at the pool, they also.
Because we have like 35 ponds ballpark yet to be done. We need to go back and reprioritize which ones move up to two, and which ones go back to three, or stay status quo.
And we worked with Steve on that. Right now, like I say, he's engineering the next go around.
Was it originally based on escarpments, issues like that?
It was two things, slope and escarpment. If it was greater than nine inches, uh, escarpment, or greater than four to one slope.
And if it was greater than four to one, you brought it to four to one?
Yep, whatever the D O was, this four to one, the, the predominance of all the old gateway was four to one. Hampton Park started into the six to ones, and Stony Brook, or Silver Lake was six to one when it was built.
And right now, it's tenth one, if you, right, I mean, at least tenth one, so that's another issue on why the latoras are growing that. But another thing is, you guys do take water samples on a monthly basis, appellican, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we haven't in over a year. So sometimes, and, and, yeah, from experience, you don't do it, you don't take care of it for two or three months, by the time you figure it out, it's when the algae bloom is all over, and when you try to treat that, it's two years. So we need to get on it, we set money aside, $20,000.
We do do water samples.
So we, we started last month?
No, we've been doing water samples every month, we have Sanders come out and pull it. We have different locations throughout Gateway, Sanders pulling water samples.
You have spots, spots.
The six samples are in here?
For the Silver Lakes and Hampton, no.
No, 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 I'm talking about the six catch base, the basins that are noted on the, on the, on the standards.
Those six basins, we pull water samples monthly from Sanders.
The only test that I know that they did, it did not, it, we really couldn't use it, because the pond standard is reference everything to the T S I, T S I. And then, and that lab did not give results on that form, so useless to us, am I right?
So the lab that we're getting, we're not getting T S I?
I'll double check.
That's critical.
Cause I, I'll double check.
That's critical, that's what all the samples are based on.
We started using them last year, and I'll double check, but I'm.
And that was, I think before you got here, I brought that up, um, that, thank you for this only one that I saw, however, they're not measuring in the way that we have set.
But if, if Bob, if we were gonna spend money on this, and money to get a bang out of my butt for, uh, water quality, I'm gonna put it in aeration every day of the week and twice on Sunday before I put it in latoral.
Yeah, we put the aeration in, I mean, okay, it absolutely helps water quality, but we did it mainly to eliminate fish kills, and to have, and we were told that the, the requirement for dredging would be 40 years instead of 20 years or 25 years.
For, for aeration.
You know, with aeration, it goes, it keeps everything.
See, that, that's one thing, we don't even have the data to be able to talk intelligently, because we don't know what we got in our lakes. Nobody has done any soundings of the main.
Well, everyone's old enough for you to do that too, but that's why we let us down the bantha, you know, we have the bath metrics.
We're supposed to have lakes 20 feet deep, I know if I go out there in front of the back of my house, there, I don't know where it is.
And in 11 years, we've never had a quality of water issue, I mean, we just have not had any. So that's why the focus hasn't been so much on water quality as in maintaining the banks.
Well, it's really, it's, it's a two-headed monster.
Well, absolutely.
Because the, uh, South Florida, uh, you get into the water quality of the latoras, they won't even talk to you, they care less. But talk about bank slopes, talk about escarpment, they're on you.
And, and we, and touching on that, on Adam, glad that you brought that up, we did talk about, um, getting that information right when, because I didn't understand why we didn't do that in conjunction with the lake embankment. So if you're going into that particular pond to fix everything else, why are we not looking to see the death of the pond? If it's meeting, you know what I mean, because you're gonna be there working, and I don't think besides, I think 83, 116, 90 are the only one that get, they're, like, the Jap came in and did the.
With a bath metric?
Yeah, right, I think there's very few, and it was not even really, and it was not even related to the bank, the lake embankment. But that's one thing that we should add to it.
But, but in your water, your water quality data, you, you have water quality data over time, because you're.
Oh, we do.
I'm assuming, the providers gotta do that.
Yes.
But what we're talking is what we do way above all of that, the yearly reporting, or quarterly, or by, by annual. You know, our provider does that, that's, you know, that's the solid.
Our provider does the year by, I think actually Elle does, she compiles all the results and she sends it out, and we, we never had an issue. Um, so.
We do a yearly M P.
So we do it yearly, and we always pass above and beyond, but, but I believe the cost for doing the verimeters was 500 to 600 dollars. Such a small cost, when you, and so that's something that, you know, if we do, I don't think we have the money, but starting a pond, that's, that's a change order that is a must. Go ahead and do it.
That's an actual small change.
I mean, it's very inexpensive.
Well, five, six hundred an acre?
Yeah.
It, it just wasn't a whole lot of money.
Yeah, I think it was for, the most one that this, that the district pay, I think was 116, it was the biggest one, and, and it was not over $800.
And if I may interject on that, what you're talking about is having somebody go out in a boat, that's not a licensed surveyor, that doesn't do bath metrics, an engineer could use, it was a.
And the price is a lot cheaper.
And it's somebody that goes out and will give you a little figure and go, you know, this is kinda, and then when they brought someone else to try to correlate the data that did it, none of it correlated. So what you're talking about is somebody dropping some depths, but not a licensed surveyor, PLS, an engineer.
My, know your lake's best example.
Well, we had, who was the company that came after, because I remember.
Community environmental survey.
Because I remember, there was, there was a discrepancy into, into some, and then they went back, and then I believe the first company said, well, we had issue with the, our equipment, it was brand new, and it did some calibration, and they went back, but I never saw the, the second result for the first company.
What was his name up at, uh, the, uh, where we do the testing, uh, the county?
Ernesto.
Ernesto, when Ernesto brought in his guy, it, it looked like they were on two different ponds, the numbers weren't even close. Well, one would show a 10-foot depth, and the other one would show 16.
We, we had, we had that same thing, and we had a pond we have a problem with, and we had the provider doing, which was Met Tower, they came up with their data set. Then, uh, we had Community come in, and he created a data set. Then Ernesto came out with his team, and they created a data set, it's all the same pond, and then we hired a totally outside person, because we're trying to measure whether we're getting the bang for the buck with the biologicals in sustaining, you know, the pond muck rate.
Well, you gotta have a G I S based methodology, otherwise you have no basis to know where you're at.
That's some, that's some big bucks, we were trying to get a, a big picture type of snapshot, and that's what we got with, with Community. It is not a scientific one, I wouldn't want to mislead anybody into that, but it certainly gives you.
An idea.
Oh, that's right, yeah, picture of the pond.
So let's keep things moving, uh, was there?
No, nothing else was there.
So I mean, I think this is definitely something like for the President's Council, we need to communicate, um, so make sure everyone's clear. You know, our main objective is water flow, water quality, infrastructure, aesthetics is at the, is at the bottom end of that. Um, and it may not be a bad idea if we could get someone to, you know, to, to put something together, because a lot of it's just communication. Uh, I mean, we've got the, uh, we got two different publications that, that distribute in Gateway. It'd be great to have an article about what the ponds are and what their uses are, uh, just to be able to educate everyone, now whether anyone would pay attention to it or not, but I think most people just don't understand the purpose of the ponds and what our obligation is, um, in, in maintaining them. Tony, do you have something?
Just briefly, uh, I, one, human beings being what they are, and human nature being what it is, if other residents in that community or other community see that a person is spraying all this and killing everything, and nothing's happening.
Oh, boy.
It's gonna spread.
You're not kidding.
We have, the district has adopted in the past the surface water management system rule, it says you can't physically do a lot of things to adversely impact the system. Uh, between now and the next board meeting, I'll get with Brian, I'll look at that rule, see how it can be applied, and, and what properties are involved, whether the district owns, fee simple to that lake, because they're trespassing, and if they're causing damage to the district infrastructure, I mean, I think.
Right, and I think that's a letter that Brian needs to go out to the HOA immediately.
That you can't do that within a 20-foot LME.
You cannot.
I was shocked.
Flavia contest though.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't send to the HOAs, because my attorney's gonna tell you, you, you haven't got a dog in that fight, you have no deal. You have, you have no standing whatsoever, it's the C D D's job. You, any HOA, unless you're the.
But the HOA can communicate that to their residents, that, because we can't, we don't have the ability to.
Well, we can send the both, I mean, what is it, 46 cents for, send the both, like, how, like, we, I mean, staff has done it, I actually request, and we have the HOA, hey, this is a problem, I need you to, so have a reminder, send it to the HOA, and send it to the particular homeowner, the two.
A letter from Tony to the homeowner will be all you need.
But, but I'm saying, there's probably more people that, I mean, others that are doing this that we're just not aware of.
Oh, I'm sure, and, and again, but I, once again, human nature being what it is, we'll see, ah, he's doing, I can think of.
Yeah, he didn't, nobody did anything about it.
Well, our providers would tell us to, if they, if they're going around a pond, and they see that somebody's been doing this, they'll tell us.
Well, I, we didn't hear about that, did we?
Well, no. I had my yoga thing out there.
What'd you say, I didn't hear?
How did you find out?
She found out about.
Walking the pond.
She went.
Even the provider should have been telling you, too.
We should have, but.
Yeah, and it is on the contract, and it is on the pond standards, that they are supposed to report any, list anything to us.
Absolutely.
I mean, granted, it looked like they did spray three days ago, I don't know if he was there, so we, we have.
Well, you'll see if it's in the next report.
Yes, so I, but I think maybe two types of communication, the communication from Tony to the homeowner directly, and then a general communication that should be an email blast to all the cams that can go to the red alert with Leslie or with Laura, hey, FYI, in this. So two types of communication, will that be something?
I think we should work with Brian on that.
Okay.
From a, from a cost point of view of the bath metrics, you can do the kind of general swag type of bath metric, which is CES, or for next to nothing, or we can do the official ones, where you, you know, in order of magnitude, it's probably 30 to one of cost or more. And I, we just never felt the need to do that.
Alright, let's move forward, uh, anything else for Brian? Thanks, man, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Uh, Kenny, are you up? No?
Boy, Brian, you screwed up the meeting, you screwed up the meeting, we were really moving.
Sorry.
Alright, I'm not, I'm not gonna ask him twice, and we'll.
He wasn't talking to you.
Well, you helped him, yeah, you helped him.
Chris, are we, are we okay to move to action items?
Yes, we're ready to start.
Uh, so we'll start with the utility rate case.
Sure. And I, I am here today, um, also Jeff Wilson with our consultant, Raf Telus is online. I'm gonna make a few introductory remarks, and then we're gonna, um, turn it over to Jeff to go through some of the highlights of the rate case. Um, we're here to get input from the board on our work product, and, um, anything additional we want to add or adjust, and then we'll bring back a final copy for the board's consideration. This project will move coincident with our budget process, because not only will it adjust the rates, which requires, um, an amendment to the rule, but we're also looking at a couple of other items in here, um, that may also need an amendment to the rule. Mr. Tinkle, you mentioned availability fees that we didn't address, we may want to look at that.
Connection fee.
Yep, connection fees, and, um, the rates, and we also have a, uh, return on investment fee, um, that would require a rule. But anyway, just basically, um, when you're looking at a rate case for the district, i- it's like any other business, cost of capital, um, revenues, expenses, improvements, debt service, labor, equipment that always goes up. And we also have a significant capital improvement program underway that will detail. We do show the cost of that capital for the five utility projects that are in our plan right now. Three of them have been approved for design and permitting this year, they would be implemented next year. Uh, these impacts are shown, what it would do, the rate for each one of those projects to pay the principal and interest for that. A couple of them may, may move forward, the storage tank and the FPL irrigation system, maybe, maybe not, it's, it's something we're gonna look at. Also wanted to mention, our utility reserve fund is taking a significant hit, um, with the costs related to the roundabouts. Everybody was looking happy, we have $5 million sitting in there, while we're getting ready to vaporize about two and a half million of it with those two roundabouts, and when people say, oh, you have 5 million, well, look at the impact here from two projects, 50% of our reserve that took several years.
That we didn't plan.
Yep.
That we didn't plan.
And you had, if you had a major line break where you had to replace something on Gateway Boulevard and go in, to spend a half a million or a million dollars is certainly not out of the question. There's been some small cities that have actually had to hold projects up, they've had main lines break on their main street, and they didn't have the funding to repair a sewer force main, so had to divert the traffic. Rate increases by Lee County are unknown, right now they aren't moving forward with any rate increases, um, due to COVID and concern with rates, but they do have plans in the next year or two to move forward with some rate increases, that would be a direct pass through to our customers. Um, borrowing for capital projects, regardless if we use a state revolving loan fund or commercial paper, that'll require a bond validation to do that borrowing, that could easily be a six, uh, more likely an eight-month process from start to finish. So if we're going to work on financing those three capital projects next year, in the next few months, we'll have to get started on a bond validation process. Comments and direction, again, provided by the board today, it'll help us fine tune this work product. This was introduced to the board in January at a workshop, and, uh, so we're moving forward with that. And the discussion today also briefly include the formation of a stormwater utility, again, that return on investment, a general fund, which we transferred $150,000 from the enterprise fund to the general fund, um, this year, and also looking at a reserve study and those availability fees and connection fees. And when you, when you go through the rate study, and I'll let Jeff follow up in a minute, but we looked at the, uh, impacts to a tip typical monthly bill, um, the impacts of, of the capital improvement program for each one of those projects. We have a bill comparison, um, irrigation rates, uh, bill comparisons across the board at 7,000 and 11,000 gallons to our customers, and, uh, proposed bills across the board. And part of the reason for the, this rate case, we did have one two years ago, was we are under earning on the water side, and, uh, irrigation expenses continue to climb, as does our appetite for irrigation water that will soon be approaching our permit level. So with, um, they're, they're big considerations, we adjusted the tiers in here, um, well down, so when people start hitting those upper tiers, they'll see a significant increase, and the political reason for this is we're trying to limit water use um, to more than what a regular yard would use, and I'm sure we'll be hearing a lot about it, and there's also impacts to master metered communities. So Jeff, are you there?
Yes, I'm sorry, I got locked out of my office, I've been scrambling.
Well, I'm glad you got back in, and our last item took a little longer, but if you wanna, wanna go through, and if you let me know, I'll do the, uh.
Well, and what I would do too, Jeff, we're, we're behind schedule already, so if you could do us a favor and just hit high points, please?
Yes, I will, um, because we just presented this, uh, a little while ago, so I was just gonna touch. Yes, I will. Cause we just presented this a little while ago. So I was just going to touch on the high points. We can actually go to again, the, see what slide it is here, slide 10. And I don't know how much Chris touched on it, but really the main driver here for the utility system is the capital improvement plan that's, system has major capital improvements planned over the next five years. So trying to fund that over the next five years. We're assuming a 20 year financing. We did do alternatives for a five year financing, but we'll show you that in a minute. That it kind of really triples the rate increase if you do a five year versus a 20 year financing. And I think the last time we met, everybody's pretty much in agreement that the more we can stretch that out to future rate pairs, the better it is. But here's the rate increases for water. We're looking at fifteen percent for the next three years and then inflationary after that. Irrigation is 10% for the next three years and inflationary adjustments after that. And wastewater is, wastewater is actually in relatively good shape at four percent increases and then inflationary after that. So if we can go to the next slide and get in actually the impacts based on those increases. Shows that water will be going up around $6 per month. As high as $7 in 2023 with those 15% increases. And the majority of that water increases are historical deficiencies. That need to bring the water system up to where they should be recovering their cost of service. Not, not as much capital on the water side. More on the irrigation and the wastewater side than wastewater typical bill. $2.20, $2.30 and then the irrigation system again to around $2 and $2.23 per month.
Yeah, questions as we go.
Sure.
Well, I don't understand this. If we're doing a 20 year capital, what's causing the bust in the three years, if it's a 20 year P and I on the capital, which is the major cost? What, what, what's occurring that I'm not aware of that's requiring 15% for three years? Why wouldn't it be 15% for 20 years? What, what, what's causing this huge jump in the numbers? If capital is being shared on through P and I over a 20 year period?
Well, because you have to start paying that, pardon me, the debt service quicker than, right, it's not spread over the 20 years. You have, once you take out the loan for the 20 year financing for the $7 million loan that we're predicting, you have to start paying that. What was that?
The debt retirement, the P and I is the same every year on a 20 year financing. Why, why would, you wouldn't have an upfront payment that would be different from the last year? It's the same basically every year for the P and I.
Now, on our, that's, or you're correct. And we're, but we're trying to phase into that. So instead of putting a full $7 million with the debt service on the system immediately for the, and it's mainly again, the irrigation system and the wastewater system, we're trying to phase that in over a three year period of time for the way, where the water system is.
The first year is only 38 bucks, but by the fourth year, you're 58.
Well, my question is the, is the money that's, is the, the reason we're going up related to capital? Because if it's related to capital, the amount is the same every year for 20 years.
You're saying it'll be like 5% for 20 years plus inflation.
Yeah, yeah. It's not upfront in the first three years unless we're trying, unless we're trying to recover money. That's what I was trying to lead him to. Are we trying to recover money because we are negative now?
We're a deficit now.
Yeah, now.
We are. Right. Yes, exactly.
But it's not capital related.
And we could have gone through the whole presentation, but yeah, that we have a historical deficiency where your rates aren't recovering or any kind of pay as you go capital. So we're including that in there too, to try to get your R and R pay as you go capital up into rates. And we're also borrowing money to do these improvements.
At the same time, what allowance are you putting in for funds from growth relative to connection fees?
And go back here.
Influencing these numbers at all?
No, we try to take it conservative. We try not to rely on that because that growth may or may not happen. Hopefully it does. And to the extent it does, it will accrue to the benefit.
You a growth project, did we give you an E R U growth projection by year to utilize in your calculations?
Yes, and we have significant growth in there with multi-family. I think some apartment complexes and some multi-family units. I think we have like a hundred units per year or and some rather large.
Hundred per year for the next five years, well.
That'll be done within five years because we only have the 550 units, the 121 over our wood, the, I mean, the 221 here and we're done, we're built.
Okay, but the bottom line. That, that's in there. The only thing that you don't have is because it wasn't a part of your deal was to determine whether or not those connection fees to be paid are, so what I want, fair and equitable. We need, we, we'll talk about that later, but we need to reexamine our connection fees to determine whether or not we're charging the right amount. Because I, I talked to Leslie earlier, I think we're at 2560 per E R U. I mean, that's, that's a joke. I was using $5,000 20 years ago.
But that's only our component, not the county component.
That's, that's true.
Right.
That's true.
So. Well, Jeff, we can, I guess, move on.
You say it's page 12?
Next slide, page 12.
Yeah, that's the difference, the impact monthly from the 20 year versus five year, right?
Right. So and each, and it shows you each individual project of the impact that would have to rate. So you can see the Hawthorne wells, about 128 or $1.42 per month. Again, you can almost triple that for, or more than that for five year financing.
There'll be no reason to do that.
We'll ignore that then. Then the 12 inch irrigation main, same thing, $1 million project. Big project is the $2 million irrigation storage tank. It's about $5 per month. FPL spray irrigation system. Similar to the other ones, so on. You can see the total. So it's about $10.86 dollars per month for those major projects.
And Jeff, I could add right now, we have the permanent design for the Hawthorne well, the 12 inch irrigation main and the 12 inch FPL bypass force mains. Those are under design. Been approved for this year and that's something that we would look at constructing next year. And the other two projects are phased in the year after that, Mr. Tinkle. And as you can see, the, the amount of the first three projects we're looking at this year are less than just the cost of that storage tank by itself.
I may, I think what might be helpful at some point in time with regards to the five year numbers. Only one, the community is educated as to what was going on with the validation process is that the reason why we're trying to validate a 20 year borrowing is that here's your rates in your 20 years, here's what they would be if it was a five year.
It just compares.
Yeah, just down the road for a part of the presentation of the.
Yeah. Do you rather pay 10 or would you rather pay 35?
Yes.
Or the better, better way to put it, because it hits them directly between the eyes is, are you willing to pay for the guy that comes here in the year six? And he gets it for free. That's the other way of putting it. And they, they determine why 20 year financing is the way to go. In fact, then they ask you, what about 30?
So Jeff, this seems pretty, pretty, Jeff, this, this seems pretty straightforward. Board, is there any questions that you have for Jeff?
The only thing I had is, is that I'd, I'd like to see an analysis of our collection or connection fee, because I think we are dirt cheap. Woefully under and we've got several, I will say 1,500, maybe 1,800 ERUs over the next five to 10 years that are going to be coming in, using our assets and getting it for free. Or next to free. That's, that's not right. We, we need to jack this number up.
I think we can go through the last season because there are a couple of important things I think you'll want to see that we can do it quickly. And Jeff, you want to, you want to move on and we'll go just through the irrigation rates and then.
I think you're exactly right, Chris. We're to not avoid anything that, real quickly with the irrigation system. It's on, I think it's slide 19 and 20. There we go. Or no, 14, there you go. Again, we're recommending to consolidate the blocks down to a lower range from, right now users have a zero to 25 gallon limit for their first block and then 25 to 50,000 gallons and then about 50,000 gallons. We're recommending to consolidate those to a zero to 15, 15 to 30 and above 30. Which kind of goes along with FDP, FDEP guidelines of watering two times a week. And their guideline for putting between a half an inch and three quarters of inch, inch of water on your typical lawn. So.
Current usage per month in Gateway, single family.
Twenty seven thousand gallons per month. So it's, that's very, 27,000 gallons per month was very, very high. Around the state astronomically high, if I might say so.
Our average single family, five eighths, three quarter inch meter customer is using 27,000 gallons a month of irrigation water, 54,000 every, every two months.
That ever, no, every month.
Twenty seven, that's what I asked, 27,000 every month. So 54,000 for two months.
Right, that's correct.
Our, our water is inexpensive. Okay, go ahead.
So that.
Here adjustment.
Right, we're trying, we're trying to curtail some of that.
Jeff, hold on. So our average today is 27,000 gallons. What do we feel is, what's the, uh, what should the bench line or the benchmark be for use in our, you know, for our acreage? Per, per E A U?
Is 15,000 more appropriate or is 45,000 more appropriate?
No, I believe on, we looked at the makeup of your community and I think it, if everybody just watered, there are two times a week. I'm not sure what your watering restrictions are there, but your typical lot is around 5,000 gallons, 5,000 irrigation space, they should be using around 15,000 gallons per month. And that includes even the rainy season. So they get that every month.
Well, it's because we have no penalties for the people that water seven days a week.
Okay. Okay, keep going.
Okay, we can move on. You can see those tier adjustments.
And, and slide 19. And we can look at the different neighborhoods, but ultimately we have time for that. But again, general fund transfer, we're recommending a 2.5% of annual gross revenues. Which equates to about $150,000 annually. So we wanted to point that out, that is included in these rate increases. That's how one to one rate impact to water, wastewater and the irrigation system. And here's just a comparison of what other utilities around the state charge for that ranges from two to 14%. So you would bet the lower end of what that type of return on investment charge.
What are we right now, two?
You don't have one right now currently.
So why, why, what are we, what are we doing here? Are we taking baby steps before we get to the average six, five or six?
Tinkle, we moved $150,000 earmarked in the budget this year, which was the 2.5% on the low end. And we were going to adopt this by rule. So when you're adopting it by rule, if you would like to increase that for next year, just remember this is a cost to the utility department. It's a return on investment and the utility customer pays that fee.
I understand that, but my, my, my thing is, is that if these are the numbers that are suggested averages, why would we go to 2.5 unless we're going to phase it? 2.5 this year, next year it'll be five.
We just did that this first year to transfer that money into the general fund and put this into a rule and get it started.
So would that be something annually that we would vote on? So whether it's two and a half percent or four percent or six percent annually, we would make that determination.
And, and once we, we might need, we need to amend the text of the rule, you know, so Chris is saying to provide for this as for others. And then the rule says that any rate changes can be by a resolution adopted by a separate shorter hearing process. You wouldn't have to amend the whole rule again to change the rates. But one other issue too, if we increase the connection fees, then we have the 90 day lifetime where there's a grandfather, he basically gets knocked on your door, free pay connection fees at the lower rate because there's a 90 day time, you click date of adoption.
You mean like buying connection fees? That's a, that's a bad memory around here.
I know.
Okay.
Just chuck that away.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff. Any, any questions around the, the irrigation component? No, thank you, Jeff. We appreciate it.
And I was just going to bring up quickly drainage and stormwater utility and, and we were, we were looking at doing that. And in my agenda item, I was recommending that we don't pursue that simply because three quarters of Pelican does not get a utility bill from us. So we would be sending them bi-monthly bills for waterway assessment. And also we would be adding that and the district would not get all the revenue when the assessment came in. It would be for the waterway management split up over six utility bills. And certainly is a lot of overhead. And I think in some cases, we, we really looked at this, if it would ease the burden of paying that assessment at the end of the year. But I think the majority of people would find it annoying to get bi-monthly bills for the year for this segment of the assessment, especially those that have it wrapped up in their mortgage payment. But it is an option.
And so Chris for.
Well, the other part of it is they're already paying it through the assessment, through our current methodology. Those 750 homes are paying and contributing to the maintenance of the ponds and everything else within Pelican right now.
Right. Chris, other than just the review, there's no, no official action today for this.
No action. We were just taking some direction and you know, we looked at, we will come back with looking at the connection fee increase compared to market. And we'll bring back a final with these rates and let the board look at them and, you know, vote on that to move forward to a public hearing. The board of course, after that public hearing can adjust the rate.
It's a good effort. It needs to be done.
And Chris, I guess from the standpoint of the rate consultants analysis, the board, you know, the rate consultant can increase in the connection, which is a form of impact. As one of the county commissioners and the county commissioner in Kyra County many years ago said, bring back the largest, most legally defensible rate you can provide. You know, we, we want to have the greatest that's legally defensive. I don't know if the board wants that or that's the discussion. And board can always come down from whatever the rate consultant believes is legally defensive.
All right, moving on to.
Jeff, thank you very much. We appreciate it and I will be in touch.
Or B, the permanent discussion on, on utility enterprise and capital budget for 2022 is Laura.
I think Kenny was going to come up and.
All right, I'll just keep moving when she comes back in. So relocation of funds for sewer valve insertion.
Kenny, you out there?
Pelican Preserve, post order.
I will take that. That was the post orders for Securitas. It's been under development. Tony's been working on it with Pelican. They came up with the final end product. 65 pages of detail how their front gate and security system operates and the rules. It's, it's sitting up there and it's supported Pelican, P PAC approved it and came from them. It's, it's sitting up there and it's supported Pelican, P-PAC approved it and came from them. So it's really just approving.
It's not new. It's just the most recent. It's revised and updated and tried working with Ron DePonte on it and Securitas was also pretty helpful work on it. So I'll make a motion that we accept that.
Have a motion a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Kenny, I'll come back to you. The relocation of funds for sewer valve insertions.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, utility manager. Well, just give you a real quick background on what's going on with this. We had budgeted one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for sanitary sewer repairs. We made cursory inspections and I believe that it was Enviro Corp was the company. We are in the middle of a budget cycle. So we kind of estimated what, what they're, from their costs of what it would cost us to do these repairs. We paid them, I believe, eight thousand dollars to come in with a high definition mobile sanitary sewer viewer camera that went through all four of the spots in our sanitary sewer that we had identified for, that we believe were breaks. They came through and came back and said, no, none of them are breaks. Two of them are lateral breaks that have since been repaired, that were actually fairly simple repairs. The other two were just actually very high flow areas. And so the money that we had out, had, had anticipated to spend on these repairs has gone unspent and is not going to involve anything to do with the sanitary sewer at this time. We do know that we have, actually, we have one vertical sanitary sewer break in Fairway Isles. We're going to be looking at that in June. May, we are going to go ahead and cut a six inch sewer clean out in there. We have found, finally found a vendor that is willing to come in and look at that and try to give us a, without cutting the road and putting a ten inch bypass pump at ten feet from these people's houses that's going to have to run for about ten days. He believes he, from what he's seen of our videos, that he might be able to repair that. So that is the one active sanitary sewer break that we are aware of, but it is a vertical and non-hor horizontal. So what we're asking to do is to reallocate this money. Mostly it's going to go to the valve replacement fund. I've already spent, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for this year. I've already spent that. We have about, I would, I'm estimating ten more critical valves that really need repairs. Once we get these critical valves that are going to require valve insertions, we will be able to shut mains down and do, do regular standard valves.
These are sewer force mains?
Some of them. We have three more sewer force main valves that we have to put in to the two we've already bought.
What other kind of valve would there be besides sewer force mains?
Water main.
I thought this was just sewer.
No, this, this, this is going to go into the valve replacement fund into the capital, which is, which is going to cover all, both of sewer, the sewer force mains and the water main.
Reassigning sewer money too.
Don't do that.
Sanitary sewer.
Blending monies here, are we? We're not taking money out of the sewer utility and putting it in.
No, this was, this hundred and twenty-five thousand was, was allocated in the enterprise for repairing these sewer, sewer breaks that we.
For sewer.
Yes.
So we can use it for sewer.
We can use it for sewer, yeah.
And, and Kenny, of those critical replacements, is this seventy K, does that cover all the critical valves? What's, how many are we?
It'll cover, it'll cover at least, at least four more that we know of right now for the, for this budget cycle. The next budget cycle is going to have another hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that should clear, clear us for, on the water main side.
This irrigation pneumatic tank, you're talking about the tank out here?
Yes, that has.
What are we going to do with it once we take it out?
Scrap it. We're going to scrap it. There's nothing else we can do with it.
Can we, what do we have to do to do that?
Adopt a resolution, just like we're doing.
Just like the other deal.
Yes.
As in it's that, as I say, the hydro pneumatic tank, and I want to be clear.
It has value.
We, we, we had this exact same system when I was, when I was with the city of Cape Coral and they said the same thing, that they would have the vendors tripping over themselves to get in there to get it. And they put it in and it sat for over a year and they ended up having to pay to have somebody come in.
So we, we don't have a mark?
No. No, we say, and I just wanted to be clear, the county is not asking us to remove this yet. They're getting ready to hit their benchmark to upgrade that plant. And once that happens, that tank is going to have to come out. It has been sitting there for six years. We cut it away in two thousand and fifteen from this tank. It is a giant eyesore. It's in the way. It's sitting on a fifty foot by fifty foot concrete platform that we would like to reality or to use for sensitive. We can put a shed in there, clamp it down and we can put all of our sensitive equipment in there. High sensitive stuff that has, there's only three people that even have access to it. We can, we can use for, for a multiple, multitude of things.
So Kenny, let me just get back to the dollar. So the seventy thousand that, you're requesting that to be funded through the hundred and twenty-five thousand that you're going to reallocate?
Yes.
Okay. The seventy thousand for the sewer jetting?
Twenty, twenty.
I'm sorry, twenty thousand for the sewer jetting, that is budgeted? Or is that also?
That's not budgeted.
Okay, so that twenty thousand is also coming out of the one twenty-five?
Yes. All the, all the three listed are coming out of that. And say, with the sewer jetting, I just wanted to be saying, you're going to see that on, on the next discussion with the budget. As we go through these communities and through the sweeping, we've been through four communities this year and, and all of them we found to have.
So, yes, all these items basically are going to replace the one twenty-five that was allocated somewhere else, which is repurposing.
Right.
Yeah, understood.
I'll make a motion.
Motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks, Kenny. And do you have the, you want to go ahead and do your?
If you want to do the budget site discussion now?
Do you have any input on the utility assessment conveyance for the high school? Any? No. Let's just run, let's run through that really quick.
Which one?
So this is going to be.
Quite a me.
Yeah, for E, utility. This is the assessment conveyance for the Gateway High School.
And, and that, that is, we have representatives here from Johnson Engineering and also the school. And this is basically the infrastructure that they put in to service the school, the water. And the big part is the wastewater pump station at four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. This is really no different than the conveyance of assets from developers to the district. It just happens to be from the school board. And those would go on our books. And I think they also had another request that they wanted us to consider. But I'll let these gentlemen, Dana, if you want to introduce yourself.
Sure, Dana Hume with Johnson Engineering. For the record, I want to start with the acceptance of the utility component that we're here today for. And then we can move on to the next request that we have, if that's okay.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, there is no documentation or request in the meeting book for the other item they want to talk about. It's purely the utility facilities. Correct?
I guess it's just in the agenda item.
And this is recommended from staff and, and engineering?
Engineers looked it over. Tony's looked it over. It's, it's very standard. You know, we have the back teeth.
Transfer.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, both the engineer and you've looked at it.
It's only as the utility facilities transfer, yes.
Okay, and no issues? Steven, any issues? Yoohoo.
Steven, you still there?
Yeah.
I just have me muted. Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hey, so we had inspection. Yeah, we had inspection services and we're, we're comfortable with what we had seen in, in the field. But usually we get a turnover package with, you know, record drawings and we look over all, all of that information. And, you know, pump curve is usually sent with drawdown tests and there's usually some sanitary sewer videos sent. I think Chris has all that and we had talked last week. He said you were going to send me that to just, to look over as a formality. But, you know, from what we've seen in the field, everything should be good to go. But, you know, I'd just like to point out, usually we see the turnover package.
We have those documents?
Yeah, we do. We, we mailed over, them over to them. I thought they already had a copy from when they were doing the inspection. But their standard back teeth test, pump test, straw down. And I also have on the agenda item, it's contingent on approval, you know, that acceptance.
Yeah, I would say, I would make a contingent approval.
And the district engineer, that line, which is in there.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Nope. You do have the turnover back. You got that.
Oh, yes, I have everything.
Here we have a one-year warranty.
Absolutely.
Starts from the date of acceptance.
That's correct. And it's not yet accepted. It's under, see the engineer sign on. I'll make a motion. We accept.
With the contingency?
With the contingent.
Is that what you're going to do?
I thought he said he got it all.
Yeah, but he didn't look at it because he didn't even know he had it.
Oh, of review, okay. Right.
Right? I'll second that. Okay.
Have a motion a second. Any, any discussion? Okay, move to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
No, okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So based on this contingent acceptance, is that something that you're going to get from Tetra Tech?
Yes.
They will send that to you and then you will notify us?
We ought to put it down.
Well, we'll have, basically, it's conditional approval based on the final review of Tetra Tech.
Okay.
Of the materials that Chris has sent over, so.
If they don't have any issues, then it'll be effective as of today.
It'll be effective as of the time that the engineer signs off on it.
So Steven, when, when do you, when can you review?
Well, I asked Dana for the information today electronically, which she sent over and I'll start reviewing that tomorrow. I still haven't received anything from Chris yet, but it'll only take us like a day and a half, maybe. It'll be very quick. I doubt there's going to be any issues from what we've seen so far.
Within a week, it's reasonable you'll get back to with those issues.
Of course.
So we sent Chris a request. Chris and I have talked about this in the past. And so when I was following up on this meeting, I sent an email. Said I needed to put it in writing to him for, for the GSD board to accept maintenance of the light poles that were installed as part of the school at the roundabout and at the bus entrance location, along with the landscaping within the island of the roundabout. After the one-year warranty is up on all of those items. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Scott with the school district. Scott?
Yeah, and Scott Rickenbacker, Director of Construction and Facility Operations for the school district. I was a little disappointed when I saw the immediate response that you folks, you were recommending not to send it to this commission for approval. We, let me give you a little bit of history of what I felt us as being a good neighbor with the Gateway community and with the GSD staff. We started out the project and the first thing we noticed is we had your Gateway Griffin monument, which was on our property. Without any question, we immediately turned that, gave you an easement to allow that monument to stay and we designed our site. We started off with a rocky road with some of the community members concerned with the adjacent properties next to our property. Multiple, multiple medias and Misslavia at that point was our representative dealing with us. We do not normally put a fence in the front, on the front portion of our property. The neighbors complained they were concerned that the kids would cut through to their, to their backyard. We installed that fence at our cost. In addition, we moved the fence into our property lot so as not to cut down additional trees behind those immediately adjacent neighbors, save some wooded area for them. They're appreciative of that. We additionally changed some of our approved LDO landscaping. There were claims of possible additional damage by our site stripping. We added more trees. We changed the scope against the LDO and added more. No question of that. Not even a concern. We have provided light shields for all the parking along the bus entry ramp. There hasn't been a complaint. I've seen the pictures. I was out here at night with Dana and our engineering team, our mechanical engineer. I've already installed along all fourteen fixtures along the bus lane, parking at that adjacent to Magnolia Lakes. Three start, three sided parking shield. No issues, no questions. We met with a Hampton Park neighbor who was complaining about the DOT required standard crosswalk light, LED light shining in their house. We met with them. We said we were going to try several factors. We cannot tilt that fixture. We cannot purchase an adjustable fixture. However, we've gone ahead and we've just purchased, it'll be on our ninth, I believe, a shield. I don't know that it's going to do a whole lot for that, but I said I would do something. I would do anything I could and we did. So we are paying the electric bill because it comes out of our transformer. I guess the existing power situation for the lights that go along Griffith had issues. So we pulled the lighting and we're paying the bill on all these lights out of the transformer that the LCEC school district pays for. We are not in the business of maintaining street pull that illuminate Griffin Drive and illuminate the roundabout. So our request was, you know, we'll give you the warranty. We put them in. We're paying the electric bill. If you're already maintaining all of the light, roadway light system for Gateway community, why would you accept these at the turn signal all the way to the end? In addition, the, there's a certain level I would think that you folks want to maintain in terms of beautification and landscape. I can tell you that the school district will not be maintaining the landscaping inside that traffic circle, probably to the level that you would like and that your neighbors and all of your associations would prefer. I'm not to say, that's not a threat. It's not to say it won't be maintained. But it's not going to be at the level I think that you expect in a beautiful community like this. So we would appreciate, and ironically, when I came here, I heard you talking about Facilitron. That comes out of my division. And it sounds like we've got a really good working relationship with you folks. We're offering you a overflow parking to solve some other issues and I heard you need space. I've got a brand new high school with a huge black box theater. And some of these accommodations as being a good neighbor with you folks, we would hope would be reciprocal back to us. So I would ask you to look at that, look at my statements, look at that recommendation and possibly reconsider. I understand if you can, but I would hope as a good neighbor, we, in good faith from day one, we have done nothing but try to be the best neighbor we can at a school district. I hope you guys would reciprocate in similar fashion.
Just a quick question, the.
I have sent you.
Yeah, I'm sure there's plenty of questions. The, the landscaping, so you're talking about the landscaping in the, in the roundabout, the center? Street lights and the stretch along the road?
Not stretch, we're, we're looking for you guys to, we put, we pay for it and we pay, it comes out of our transformer. So we're always going to be paying the electric.
I understand the lights. I'm talking about just the, from the landscaping. It's within the roundabout. That's it, just within the roundabout. Okay. And just out of curiosity, is there the, the landscaping that's in front of the school adjacent to the road, is, is that stretch irrigated?
Yes.
It is, okay.
And I guess my, mine's going to bounce off of yours. So the roundabout, the Bahia, the Bahia, whatever. And then the monument, the, the three oak trees that you guys, that we asked them because they were going to remove those big canopy oak trees. And I remember I partnered with Kathy and pretty much begged them to keep them there. And so those two, right at, right at the eighty-two?
Correct. And all that. And, and the ironic thing is, our original D O approval didn't require any cleaning or irrigation in the, in the circle. I will not swallow an elephant choke on an ant. My directive immediately did build it a super, our school board. Dana, put it in. Just put it in. So we've done all these things and, and now we just look for our partners to.
It would, okay, I'm just going by, so we wouldn't take it, are the small oak trees that were planted on Griffin about fifty or thirty, are those prior to the swill or after? Because they're on your property, right? So you'll be maintaining those. Okay, so it's literally just mowing the Bahia all the way down from Magnolia to that, to eighty-two. The little circle that has three Sylvester's, three sables and some oleander plants in there? On the cir, on the circuit out. No, the, the roundabout, the roundabout. I think there's, just so we know what the landscaping it is. So it's regular mowing, three Sylvester's, if I'm recalling correctly, maybe three sable palms. And I think three oleander plants. That's all there is.
There is no grass in the ground.
There's no ram.
It's just rocks. Yeah.
So that's a standard Lee County DOT roundabout landscaping plan that they plant in all of their drive.
And then if you wanted to maintain, like how we talked about the beautification part of adding the flowers to either match the Stony Brook or to match the Gateway entrance to the eighty-two, it's on their property. Flowers in front of the, of the monument. Right now it's just Bahia. And we, and Brian and staff, we were waiting to make sure the irrigation was working because they were working on it for a few months. So they're willing to let us mimic, you know, the pretty stuff, I'll say, on the other side.
And so the roundabout has irrigation?
Yes.
Okay. And then what is, that's coming off of your irrigation system?
Yes, which is off of your reading slot.
Correct, we pay for that.
And then the other one was, I, I keep hearing that we were having issues with the street lights and reflecting into people. Has that, has that been resolved with both Hampton Park and Magnolia Lakes, yeah?
I can tell you that I've met my design standard in LDO. I've gone over and above on the Magnolia Lakeside and now added three sided shields to all of the street lights that are adjacent to your property lot, all the way down.
Did that settle the owners?
I thought it was settled, in my opinion, even before I put the shields on. But I went out. But I went out there at night and I thought, you know what, for a couple grand.
Even with that being said, though, I mean, here's the thing we need to consider, too. By putting the shields on, you limit that scope of span with that streetlight.
Correct, it's a three-sided shield.
We've basically done something for the residents, but we've also limited the intent use of that.
So, when it gets really dark and they worry about maybe somebody over there they can't see?
Yeah.
Well, they got what they asked for. But, but I do believe Magnolias, there was only one, maybe possible two residents along all 60 properties that had a concern. And then I, I wasn't even aware that they went and put in shields, because it's literally only two residents that. And then I, I did go and visit, I mean, there is the, the lights by the lift station and Griffin. It's bright, but there is nothing, I mean, I saw, it's, it's a, it's a different height and it's the one that you cannot adjust. Totally different.
It's a Department of Transportation standard. We meet the Candela across the street, we're at two foot Candela, I believe, correct Dana? The problem is, is when we went to their house at nine o'clock, Cecil, Pennegras, got a call and an email, so we went out with our entire crew, met with the people. My personal opinion, it wasn't bad, as was, I believe, the crew. However, sensitivity is something that we have to take into consideration. So, we promised these people we were gonna try several things. One is, since it's a hard, hard fit bolt down, we said, well, let's see if we can craft a shade, loosen it up and just get a couple degrees. We can't do that. So, we reached out to the manufacturer. Is there a fixture with a knuckle that could, that can adjust in a downward position? No, there's a fixture that only adjusts in the upward position. So, exactly, so, so the last one was, we could get a shade. Now, the shade is a hundred dollar shade, I think, ultimately, because I gotta get the crews out there and the lift is gonna cost me another fifteen hundred bucks. It's a moot point. So, do I think that's gonna do a whole lot? No, but it's, I've done everything I physically can, that's, it's part of a Department of Transportation standard for a crosswalk with the appropriate illumination. It's so bright LEDs, it's not shining in their house, but it's like that meteor, if any of you saw the other night.
Yeah.
It gets your eyes.
So, but my, but my question was, you answered it, they're LEDs?
Yes.
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 Did they try to do anything different with the different type LED?
I'm not allowed by, by law, SREF and state statutes, I have to build per energy code, 2017 energy code.
Okay, so that's, that's what's set.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, there's a one-year?
Warranty.
One-year warranty?
Yes.
So, what's our, Chris, what's our risk here? Is it damage?
No, the only thing is, we had, you know, and I think it was only one complaint or two over Hampton Park. We really didn't have anything coming out of Magnolia doing the shield. And my staff recommendation was just based on the landscaping and streetlights at the Griffin and Commerce Roundabout. We left with the county at that code minimum, so I was just being consistent.
I mean, I think our, our initial reaction was, that's, you know, it's not something we wanted to, to take on, but. We can't do it today, anyway, can we?
No.
We have to have, we have to have it on the agenda for a meeting to make a decision.
There's a consensus by the board and a willingness to look at the package and the specs and everything else is outlined. We can put on the next board meeting for, for acceptance and consideration of acceptance and have Chris, Steve and I look at all the documents and the board can decide in one, one aspect if the light by the, was it a pump station or lift station you said?
But this, this isn't an illumination for the pump station, this is a light.
For a crosswalk.
For a crosswalk.
And, and to tinker with that and contrary to any specs ensures live.
Live building, yeah. So, I think what we, what we, what we'll do is, we'll put this on the next-gen item, just so we follow protocol. I'd like to go out there in the dark and look at it. I've not seen it in the dark.
Correct, well, here, here's the thing, we, what I wanna, if I can get across to you, is we meet code. So, as far as I'm concerned, the lighting issue should not hold hostage to any type of agreement we're looking at. There is nothing that can be done with the situation that's out there now.
Yeah.
It meets code, it meets DOT traffic design standards, it meets illumination, it meets Lee County LDO requirements. So, I've met those requirements. What I'm saying is, in good faith, I've tried to do everything we can. We think it's beneficial to you for future plantings and flowers to keep that island beautiful. And we're not in the habit of being streetlight managed.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I think we understand.
And I have one final question. So, the requirement for that light, for the crosswalk, we have the elementary over here, and I do not think that the crosswalk that's right across from the elementary has the, the lights. I don't think it has one, neither two. Is that something that the school will be looking into and retroactive adding there to meet the standards or no? Because it would need to be a major change on the structure of the school?
It would have been grandfathered in with the original design of that school. Now, if you guys own those roads and crosswalks, I'm not sure who the owner of that.
Lee County.
Lee County, don't get us.
That could be a Lee County, if they ever come to do roadway improvements and they have to upgrade it to current code DOT standards, and yeah, they would put it, be putting in probably the exact same fix.
Okay.
Is that, I mean, representing the school board, working so close to another school that you own and operate, would, would that be a recommendation that you would make to the county that in safety of a, of a school at a crosswalk, that you wouldn't want to?
My recommendation would be the county takes the roundabout and all the lights all together, but that's not the case.
Well, that's, my, my point is, you, you gotta stand. Yeah, that's, that's what we would just ask, if you could extend that courtesy, I mean, that, that would, that would be appreciated. You'd probably have more, more influence than maybe we would have.
You'd be, you'd be surprised, we will ask the question, but unfortunately, state statute says that none of the utilities, roadway infrastructure should be formed by the school district. It should be by the local entity. Unfortunately, we have an interlocal agreement, which is very weak, that supersedes that. I should not have paid a penny for that roundabout, that should have been covered. Unfortunately, the interlocal agreement tied my hands on it, and we're gonna be revisiting interlocal agreements, but, so our.
We could talk about paying for stuff that you don't want to pay for.
Oh, I agree.
You know, all day long.
So, on my strength with the county, we certainly can ask, I don't know how much traction.
Well, just when you think about the, the, you know, safety and liability, it seems like something that, that should be done, so.
And I think, if I may, I think part of the challenge, one, we're dealing with a brand-new school, and we're dealing with older kids and nighttime events and that kind of stuff, hence the crosswalks. So, when, when the existing school was built, they didn't have the same standards that they have today.
Yeah.
And so, that's kind of the challenge.
Yeah.
We will most certainly make the request with DOT. We're working with them on all of the schools, so that's not unusual to try, and, and we'll let you know the results of that.
And quick question, the, the deal with Facilitron for that, the elementary parking lot?
Yes.
Were they charging a fee base or they were?
Well, we hadn't gotten there yet. It was, basically, we need to start using it, and I think there is a fee structure, however, Chris.
That might be something I could help you with.
Well, Chris already said with the, the, from what we operate, there's, it's a tiering structure and we wouldn't, we probably wouldn't have been charged anyway. We haven't gotten.
Maybe something I could help you with, like I said, both hands washed.
Well, thank you, Scott, we appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
The sign, right, or is it the parking opening sign, one for Hannah, one for Magnolia?
Correct, Flavia.
You, you are late.
Flavia, Flavia came and I told her I would get her a sign. They've had a problem at the elementary with the parents waiting for parent pickup.
On the side of the road.
I explained to her that with our stacking, that shouldn't be the case there. But if it's one sign, I've gotta get, have my construction staff put in right there by the, the lift station.
On my side, it's fine, and I know Chris met with Hampton Park and they were actually concerned thinking about closing the whole entrance because of that, and I think that'll be great news for them, if, that you've been all putting a sign and at least enforcement can take place. But if you're saying it's not gonna happen, we'd like to believe it, but we'd like to have a sign there in case it does happen.
Are you saying no parking along the road? Yeah.
The garage, because you don't have stacking capability inside some of the existing schools.
Oh, yeah.
Dana, how much stacking capacity?
Instead of going waiting in line, they pour from the road and have their kid walk out of the road.
Parent pickup, how much stacking?
Oh, it's.
Gateway High. At least 100. At our typical older schools, that was never put into place, hence the backup and the people coming in. You don't have that long waiting time for high school level, that's pretty much elementary only. But if I gotta put one sign right there by Magnolia, the pump station, I have no problem with it, so.
All right, thank you very much for coming in, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Let's go, let's go to 4F, Resolution 2109, Surplus Property Disposition.
This is a resolution that is the action necessary, needed to take and dispose of the concession stand equipment and the board discussed at the last board meeting. And this is just the formal record-keeping and formal determination of that. And Brian's gonna attach photographs of this fine equipment to the resolution.
Yeah.
We load them up on the share.
Okay, and it'll be.
And Brian, have you communicated with the leagues, the equipment that's being removed? Yeah, can you just let, let them know, because there's, what's gonna be removed, because I think there's some other stuff on top of it and everything else, so they just need to know that, they need to get whatever's theirs.
No, we're only taking out what's ours.
I, I know, but I'm saying.
They may have stuff on top of it.
There's some stuff that's in there, and I just want them to be aware of what we're taking out, just in the event that there's any discussion on what is theirs, not theirs, or whatever, which I don't think there's, will be anybody.
Yeah, and, and I think what we do, print out the photographs, attach them as exhibit A to the resolution, one sign.
Yeah, I don't know how you're gonna get that big fridge ritter unit out.
It'll come out in pieces.
I'll, I'll swing a sledgehammer if you need.
Do you want you to accept this resolution?
Yes.
You got it.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And I'm gonna jump to 4G, Pelican Preserve, DRI Amendment Proposal and Demnification Agreement.
This again is a document that I mentioned earlier. Steve, Dan, Sick and I are signed off on it, and the standpoint of making recommendations to respect of client Steve to the Pelican Preserve, or Community Association and myself to the board. And it's been provided to Charles Mann to get his sign off on behalf of Lennar. And so, I, again, I mentioned, I just nudged Charles again today, we'll keep nudging him. But what I'd like to do is have the board approve the form of this agreement, substantially final form, so that we can then tell Charles, hey, the board's approved this, and keep moving forward.
And if it changes again, you'd bring it back?
And if there are substantial changes, because mine are a little, a little matter, we wouldn't, not need to, but if there are, if I consider them substantial, major items, yes, I would bring up that thing, and I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Just as a ma, as a matter of interest, with regard to the project, the vote we're taking for the land transfer from the association to the CDD, the voting ends actually on the next Tuesday, but we already have sufficient votes. We've, we've got over 36%, quorum is 30%. And so, and the vote is about 95 to 5 for the land transfer, so that looks like a done deal. It's just part of the thing we needed to do.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah. Did Laura leave again? Are we gonna?
And that was Kenny's item, he was just gonna do a preliminary discussion and presentation on the enterprise and capital budgets. And it's so warm up for a budget coming up.
Okay, Kenny.
Thank you, Kenny Hall, utility manager. Leslie's also gonna chime in a little bit as well. We just threw, threw together a preliminary, preliminary budget numbers. We sat down and went over everything for the last two years and, and started plugging numbers in. And for the 400 and the 301, which is Capital Improvement Fund, and just to garnish some of the board on where we wanted to go with this and let you all look at all the numbers and what you thought, where we, the whole discussion. If there, the main, one of the main things that we've added as far as line items on the 400, which is the Enterprise Fund, I'm gonna let Leslie jump in on one of them, sewer line jetting. As we go, so I just said, we, as we go through these communities, it is becoming abundantly apparent that we need to greatly enhance our sewer jetting. I'm talking the sanitary sewer. Say, we've gone through four communities already, and each and every one of them, we are finding some serious blockages. We're looking for a foot to two foot per second, we're getting about .3 to .4 per second in almost all of the sanitary sewer. And, and the, and the jetting, we put in at $20,000, $25,000. And that is for the actual jetter, and once we jet all the stuff out, we have to have a factor to our curve seam to remove it. We do not want this debris piling into our lift stations, it will clog the pipe, the, the pumps up. Your force mains, it discretes all kinds of havoc within your sewer force main system. I also up significantly, I'd say significantly, but the maintenance and repairs on water distribution, wastewater collection and irrigation distribution, we went to $75,000 for each one of them for the year. And, and mostly what's driving this is de-aging out of the system, and I'm preparing us for some major breaks and some major happenesses that are, are just inevitable in a 35-year-old system that has not been properly maintained.
Question? Yeah, go ahead. I could assure that we had water, capital improvement issues and valve replacements. Where's, where's the water valve replacements? We haven't got anything budgeted.
For the 301, we have $100,000 budgeted for valve replacement.
So, is that something? That sewer, there's nothing under water. I, I, because where do you see it? That's wastewater. Where do you see it? Kenny?
I moved, I had it up there, Mr. Tinkle, it's under the Capital Improvement Plan Enterprise Fund.
That's where I'm looking.
And valve replacement, 100,000.
He's looking on the wastewater.
That's wastewater, yeah. Where's the water?
That, that will be broken up, the sewer should be, and the money that we just reallocated should finish up the sewer, and these, this would actually be in the water side. I don't know why it's on the wastewater.
That's why it's watering, so this valve replacement.
We did 125,000.
Okay, yeah, it says down below portable, okay, so that goes up.
Yeah, that goes up into the water section.
Because you just took the 125.
That money that we just reallocated.
That's not enough.
Finish it. Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. I was gonna say, I know that we had something in there, it was valve replacement.
And then, we also broke out on, on, for the safety equipment, PPE, with all the new that's happened, to break that out, so we can track it better. Leslie has two items on the 400, and then on the 301, we added, one of the major things in it, that, that, that we felt we needed was the mobile, we have a need for another, another mobile bypass pump. And from what we, lessons learned from Irma, was that Pelican Preserve now has a fixed bypass pump and a fixed generator. So, what, and, and what happened in Irma is we were cut off for about a period of three days, I believe it was three days total, and we could not get into that.
Very scary.
Right, so what we're planning on doing is just staging one generator in there with the truck that would, in the event of a hurricane coming, that's where we would stage it. The wild card is Arborwood. What's gonna happen with Arborwood now, because it's so detached from the rest of the district, how are we gonna get over there to, in an emergency situation, what are we going to do? If we move one of our mobile bypass pumps that's gonna be in Pelican, and then we move one over to there, we have cut off our main, main lift stations where we have a mobile bypass pump. So, we would have one mobile bypass pump for everything that does not have a fixed pump at it.
You said something 301, what are you talking about?
Capital, capital improvement, that is, we, we coded as a, I called 301, sorry, that's, that's.
Okay.
It's a fun coding.
Okay, 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 okay.
Also, Stony Brook, Stony Brook's lift stations are 16 years old now, and they are due for a major, their major overhaul. We've gotten our money's worth out of these stations. We've not had anything super major happen to any of the satellite stations throughout their 16 years of service. They are due for relining, all of the ductile iron will be removed, we replace with standard HDP, all the plug valves, check valves will be replaced. One of the major things with Stony Brook is we, we are going to replace the fences. There's three fences that need to be completely replaced, and the two driveways for Station 13 and 14 at the end of Stony Brook that are in the sidewalk, like we did with the front two, we wanna put those two up to get us out of the road.
That 840 is all Stony Brook?
No, is that your? That's total for the, for the five years.
I know that, but it says Stony Brook, it's.
That's for the 22.
Just 22?
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say, man, what are you doing, silver platinum?
We would like to do them all at one time, to get them all done, get it, everything, get everything out of the way. It's gonna be painful for the residents for, for a period of a month, I would assume. Or we break it up and do it in the years, that's, that's entirely how the board wants to go with the approval. And we added a, a vehicle and a pole barn and a diesel fuel tank. The vehicle would be a small Ford multipurpose transit van, a mini transit. This would also, our, one of our F-150s is coming due, it is, is in 2012, and then two green John Deere minis would also be replaced. And this van would replace them, so we would get one new van and for, we would eliminate three vehicles, two.
Two, I get rid of the Gators?
Yes, so, yes.
All together?
Oh, well, the, not the, the, the large John Deere with, that's on.
So, instead of having three of those Gators, we only have, we'd have one?
We'd have one. And then the F-150s, both of them are 12s and 13s, and they're coming to the end of their service life anyway. This transit, if you add up all the make, vehicle maintenance for the two F-150s and the two Gators, we'd have, we'd have been able to buy a transit already with, with what we do. Every time we send one of those F-150s in, it's $2,000, $3,000, they come back with every single time, and then you got tires and all the general maintenance. And they're just, they're, they're. $2,000, $3,000. They come back with every single time. And then you got tires and all the general maintenance, and they're just, they're, they're 2012s and 2013s, and they're coming to the end of their usable service life.
Is, is all of that 3,028 in 21 budgeted? Or is it going to have to spill into 22?
21.
Your projected 2021.
21 costs 3,028. Is that all in our costs, or is it going, going to have to be?
It's a split budget years.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, well, you're, yeah, that's the issue definitely, because that is the, oh, the, the 800, the two 800, big, big ticket items are SRF.
So out of that 3 million, there's some of that that's funded, some of it that's not, correct?
The facilities plan or the SRF, yes.
Okay, so we probably, as, as a follow-up, Kenny, what we probably need to do.
What needs to go over?
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, what needs, what, if it is not funded, then it's got to, it's got to move down the road.
I'll, I'll say the Hawthorne well and the, and the 12-inch irrigation main and the spray system would move out because two of those are not to 2022, that there'd be construction and really, you know, moving into 2023. The spray irrigation system would, would both move out a year or two. The spray irrigation system would go into design in 2022 and start construction in 2023.
So they slide one.
Yeah. Whereas, you know, the, the 12-inch irrigation main and the Hawthorne well, those are both scheduled, would start in fiscal 2022 or calendar 23.
I think we need to get these.
Yeah, so you're, you're saying, and it's for capital improvement, the 615,000 for projected 2021, that is net new, non-budgeted items.
Correct.
100%. Yeah, okay. So basically, everything you have on here is not budgeted. Or are there any items that make up that 3 million, the projected 2021? That, that's budgeted versus non-budgeted?
Well, what, what it is, is part of that is those projects, and the three of them we mentioned earlier, would go into the rate to pay the PNI, and that would be SRF funding.
Okay, so what we need to do is, let's just clean this up in our next pass. And just identify, you know, if we're going to shift, what is allocated versus unallocated from, from a dollar perspective, but this is a good, good snapshot. Now, for the pole barn perspective, can we put that up without? We can't, right?
Well, we're checking out right now. What it would probably be is we can, we could put it out like over that grass area out there, but what it would do, it would be to impact the stormwater. You'd have to have some additional pond size, and we're looking at what it would take right now to do that.
What pole barn?
Pole barn. You recommended the pole barn.
You requested that we add.
To cover the, to cover all the equipment?
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you meant the office expansion. I was going to say, good lord.
No, that's the whole.
I was going to say, man, did we really drop down?
No, that's, we haven't, that's outside utilities, which we have.
Got one of those little guys out there with a fan that's waving everybody?
And we will be adding, or we would like to add a diesel fuel tank.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that makes sense.
And then they say, the rest of it, I'm going to turn it over to Leslie. She had, she had some breakout, breakout stuff that she wanted to go over and some capital.
And Leslie, we are running over, just so you know.
Mine will be quick. Leslie, we're talking Utility Billing Manager. I just put on the capital, two items, the asset management slash work order system, which will include GIS mapping, and I also included the software, it'd be on the capital. The software for the billing system.
That's the 80K.
80K is the work order asset management. I'm projecting about 50, I believe it was 50,000 for the billing software.
Oh, the 75 for the billing, is what we have.
I don't think I'll have, based on available resources, that those will be done in one year.
For those resources, like the, the billing resource, is that, do you have to purchase that outright, or is it? Or is it like a software as a service type deal where you're, you're paying an annual subscription?
You have to pay enough front annual conversion cost, and then there's an annual cost.
But what you're saying is that first year cost will be 75K?
It depends on the system we would go towards. Quote so far, depending on what services we wanted, range from 35 to 75. So that's on the.
And then, on average, what's the reoccurring annual?
Currently, we're paying 10,000. That includes our customer portal. So I would imagine that probably go up to 14, 15.
Okay, all right.
So those two items, I don't believe, just based on how involved the asset management system will happen, if I'll do both at the same time. I'm thinking, based on our metering situation, that I'll probably push the billing to 23 this school year.
Yeah, it's magic word, metering. We don't have anything in here for two and a half, $3 million meter project.
Right.
Where's that at?
Wasn't going to bring that up or discuss it based on, I don't know, where our final, the final report in that meeting, what direction that goes.
I understand that, but that's why I ask him. That's a number that's possibly beyond.
Could possibly be, yes.
Good. Yeah.
And for the expense operating side, I just split, I have a metering and supply budget code. I've split that up into three separate codes going forward for 22. One will be strictly for meter and supplies, new installs, and the, the other two are for maintenance and repair.
Yeah, good.
And that's all I really have for.
Great.
I heard you mentioned GIS.
Yeah.
Yes.
What, what is that?
Currently, we, we have Austin is tracking our asset management through a free, I guess, version of GIS. So we're going to get a licensed GIS product.
Which gives us more capability and variance. Yeah. We're trying to get the Pelican way, you know what I mean?
Well, I heard it. That's why I was, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to jump in with one other thing. Another thing on the 400, the Enterprise Fund that we added that was not there that last year, that is there this year, is the meter box switchover. With our new staff, it has freed up some of the, where we can actually get out there and really get after swapping out these old boxes for the new ones. That's a, that's a pretty big.
Did, did we get a, sleep, did we get a rate reduction from the county? I'm sorry, a water sewer? Sewer?
That was a temporary credit due to the.
Well, we're showing, we're showing 22 variance in the budget of the water being 368,000 less, and the wastewater 600,000 less, which that's 30% and 50%. What, what am I missing here? They didn't reduce our rates by that much.
Drop down.
I'm sorry?
Little more.
What am I missing here? Variance between 22, 665,000, and the budget's 1,200,000. That's 50% reduction. Something doesn't look right.
Looking at the, our bulk water.
I'm looking at FY22 budget, 1,340,000 for water, potable water purchases, and that's a 368,000 less is what I'm, I'm seeing. It just doesn't make sense. I could see the rate being stagnant, but I, it's status quo, but I can't picture them cutting the sewer by 30% and the water by 50% of what we would have paid in 21.
And the only thing I can think of is looking at would be the volume that we're doing, but that shouldn't have gone down that much.
Something doesn't look right there on that. And I don't know what it is. The 21 budgets, 1,340,000. The 22 budgets, 1,340,000. Then how can it be 368? It'd be zero.
We'll reexamine that.
Or, or, or the other one, 2021 budgeted with 1,340,000, and we're only projected at 971. There must have been one hell of a lot of water conservation going on.
You got a leak.
No, it's the other.
The numbers came from Infomark, so let me look. I didn't check their formulas on the spreadsheet.
So, so, so just check that. Okay, thank you.
I had the only stuff that I plugged in was whatever's in the gray column under FY22 budget. Everything else came from Infomark.
I like what I saw. I didn't believe it.
Okay. Moving on, any items to pull for consent agenda A or B?
None for me.
None.
Got a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I assume there's no discussion. So all in favor of accepting consent agenda items, five A and B?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And no opposed. Supervisor comments. Bill, we'll start with you on the line. Any comments for today?
I have none. Thank you.
Sir? We'll start down at that end.
Okay. I just have just to I, I guess Jim is out, right?
Next week.
Okay. Okay, so I do have a few pending requests that I just wanted, some that I had made in January. I don't know if it was Brian when he got here or not, and then they're still pending for just some, some issues. So I guess I'll follow up with him that. And then the second one, I guess, was the, the request that I received from Eagle Point in regards to that mowing. I did, I assume what you wrote on the email was what it was. So a resident has reached out, I guess, Chris, you want to go? Because you probably know more detail than me, but in short summary, they're asking the district to mow property that belongs to them. So my response was, we're not in the business to mow your lawn.
Property?
Yes. So, so I say, unless the request is to mow, because, you know, the little mow, I say, unless the request is to mow the property that belongs to the CDD and the same day that your vendor does, I can tell you ahead of time, I said, this has happened with Magnolia, and they will accommodate if they can, but they cannot. So what I did is contacted my vendor and say, you, you know, you work around their time. Going back and forth, and then she mentioned that this was an item that was approved in 2018 by, by Mainscape, which it has no authority to approve or disapprove. If they want to do it the kindness of their own heart, great, but it's not something that we can do, we can do anything about it. I'm not aware of any property besides this particular request that we're doing this, right, Chris?
That was in 2018, and they said they had two or three feet of property that their landscaping company had to come out and cut, and they wanted us to, while they were there, we'd whack around their monument, cut the grass, and I sent them their plat, and I sent them the right-of-way map, and I said, we stop here at the right-of-way, and if I did your monument, I'd be doing everyone.
Yeah.
And I sent photographs and the whole thing, so. And they made a mention that, well, this was approved by the landscaping committee, and I said it was brought up for discussion, but there was never any action taken by the committee or the board to authorize cutting on private property.
So, so in the same way, so would you just formally respond with the, with the letter to the requesting that we stand as we stand?
I can use the same one I sent in 2018.
It works.
That's it. That was easy.
Supervisor Tinkle.
Yeah, where, where are we at on hiring somebody or doing something on the park? What are we going to do? These people, we're going to go to a meeting. These people are going to ask questions. I don't think we should be shooting from the hip. I think we need at least to get somebody in here to have a, an idea of a plan of what we're going to do in the future.
This takes four minutes.
All right, good answer.
I have a whole lot to come in.
Second one, a lot of people were complaining about the watering of the sod up on Gateway Boulevard, and it looked like it was taken care of. It was just an issue of not getting the Mainscape to turn the things on more frequent.
Yeah, it turned on additional. It was a new sod that was placed without trees came out.
It does look like it's starting to get green again.
The rain did, I, I went there, the rain helped. Two, two days, I took some pictures before the.
That's all I.
Bob?
No, once I become authenticated to get into the minutes, I'm good.
Okay. I just want to make one quick comment, just from, just an observation. I actually, I think I was leaving at the last board meeting or sometime last week with staff, and just kind of looked out at the parking lot and walked through there, and we have a legitimate boneyard over there. I mean, there's, you think about, you know, two years ago, when there was cars and, and stored stuff, and now we're utilizing. I mean, we've got a place to put stuff, and, and I just compliment staff for, you know, actually establishing a, you you know, a utility and public works department that has resources that they can tie into. So, and we're, we're recycling more. I mean, just even see the light poles that are out there and things that we have on hand. You know, it's just, this is the direction that, that we should be going into. So again, we, we probably acknowledge all the work that staff does, but we probably don't recognize them quite as, quite as much. But, you know, again, we're light years ahead of, ahead of where we were, you know, three, five, definitely 10 years ago. So just, just kudos to, to staff's continued dedication to, to our priorities.
Yep, I did think one more. Landscape plan. Did we talk to Donald to see about being a?
I have not gotten with him to ask about the trees.
Yeah.
But we've reached out, right? I think I saw, haven't we?
We have some landscaping issues related to the FPL easement and the Prezy, who now, who now works for Holmontes.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Okay, all right. So I will call the meeting adjourned at 5:40.
Six.